So good morning, Petaluma. Thank you so much for joining us today. It's beautiful Saturday morning at the fairgrounds. This morning, staff is going to... So a year ago, we were at the community center and we had a community-driven process for setting city goals and priorities. And a year later, we are ready to report out, get your feedback, make some changes, prioritize, but truly tell you what we've been doing on behalf of you. So this morning, staff will present some highlights. We have five goals. You can see them across the back room. We've got Goals 1, 2, and 3 we'll be going through, and each one of those, staff will give some highlights, take council questions, get public feedback, and then bring it back to council to finalize, make those changes, and then move on to the next goal. We'd like to get through three goals before lunch, and yes, we're feeding you lunch today, and then pick up the last two goals after lunch. So there's many ways to provide input today. You have these cards. Please feel free to fill these out and then bring them... Ingrid, how are we collecting these?
We're gonna just have them collected at the back table.
So just leave them at the back table where Susie is back there.
Susie and Nancy.
And we'll be collecting these and recording these. We also have a survey online at City of Petaluma, our brand-new website, cityofpetaluma.org/goals. There's a survey, and then obviously, we've got public input today. Just want to kind of reiterate, you know, we are a full-service city, and we've been demonstrating that. I want to give credit to staff. The 157 work plan items that you're going to hear about today represent thousands of hours of staff work over the last year. Remember, council approved these goals in July, so we've actually formally have been working on these since July, so about eight months of work, of very hard, dedicated work. Not yet. So it represents thousands of hours of staff work. Our staff display pride, passion, professionalism every day, despite mandatory overtime, aging infrastructure, equipment, nonexistent technology, despite the fancy mics we have today. We have seven people here who, week after week, spend hundreds of hours doing their homework despite having full-time jobs to ensure that you get the biggest bang for the buck, that we adopt sound policies, and they have to make some very tough decisions because things aren't black and white. You, our investors, our supporters, make us strive to be the best full-service city you deserve. You push us, but we ask for some patience and hope that you recognize your role. The biggest change that we've had in this past year is bringing you to the table because this is your city. We work for you, and we don't always get it right. We don't always get it right, but we really do strive to be the best city. You will never meet a more dedicated staff. These folks, like I said, every single day strive to do their absolute best. So I hope you leave here today inspired and excited for our future, and after all, this is your Petaluma, so get involved today, ask questions. We'll be around... Staff is interspersed in the crowd, so please feel free... Staff, please introduce yourself, raise your hand, grab a staff person, ask questions. We want it to be interactive today, and I hope you're really proud of the work that we've done and that we're going to continue to do. So with that, I'm gonna kick it off. Mayor?
City Manager, yes.
Yes, thank you.
You know, I have to say that you have to know that we have a really engaged staff when our city manager just like ran with that before... We've actually even officially opened our workshop. So she... They are ready to go. So that is a wonderful statement, and I just wanted to officially say thank you for coming, and even though this is an... Well, it used to be every other year that we did this. Last year, when so many people showed up, we really understood that we do need to have a way to allow our engaged public to find out what we're doing, let us know what we're doing right, let us know where the public wants to be, and engage with us. And so this goals-setting session is as much for us to hear from you as it is to report back on what we are doing. Having said that, there are forums, just like at city meetings and at city council, for people who want to talk. Please fill those out and give them to our city clerk, who is in pink at the end of this table. And I'm, you know, I'm not sure that we're all... It's gonna be very clear where you think you want to speak, so, you know, that part is not so clear to me because the way the goals are set up, it may not seem like something that's aligned with what you want to talk about. So it doesn't really have to be specific to where we are on the agenda. If you hear something that makes you want to talk, please fill out a card and let's have you speaking at that time. As we deal with each goal, we will have a public comment time, but I am going to keep the public comments down to a minute. So really say what it is you want to tell us because we have, you know, a number of people are here and we have a full agenda for the day. So with that, we're gonna start the meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. So hopefully, everybody has this compendium of work plan item status, and that'll help you follow along. And we are going to go ahead, and I'm gonna introduce Cory and Brian. So our Finance Director, Cory Garbiolio.
Peggy, I'm sorry.
We gotta do roll call.
Yeah, we don't have...
Sorry.
It's really not on my agenda, so I forgot it.
Yes, thank you.
Let's do roll call, and I also... Before we start roll call, I'm gonna say there is a butcher block piece of... On a table, paper at the back of the room on the right side for most of you. Yes, see where those hands... Where Patrick is waving his hands, right below that. If you would like to sign it, it is a thank you that we are sending to Congressman Jared Huffman regarding our river dredging. So since I know the community is so happy about that, I really want to give the thanks to the person who made it happen. So please remember to sign that. Thank you. Now we'll do roll call. Can someone give the clerk a microphone? Thank you.
Okay. It's on. Okay. McDonald?
Here.
Healy?
Here.
Herny?
Here.
Fisher?
Here.
Barrett?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
King?
It's official, we're all here. Okay, thank you.
Yay. Now we can go. Peggy Manager. So we will be kicking off an introduction by our Assistant City Manager, Brian Cochran, and our Finance Director, Cory Garbiolio.
Okay, good morning, everybody. Brian Cochran, Assistant City Manager. Just a couple slides to overview this process, where we've been, and what we're gonna continue to be going through as we look at the goals and potentially establish some priorities. So wanted to just do this quick overview. We've got five goals, as Peggy mentioned. City that works for everyone, our environmental legacy, a safe community that thrives, an economy that prospers, and spaces and places that inspire. So as was mentioned by the mayor, we are going to take public comment and city council discussion, comment, questions, et cetera, after each goal, and we will do three, hopefully, before lunch, and then two after lunch. And then we'll also, at the end, talk about some next steps and some things to look forward to coming up. So timeline of the process, and this has kind of been ongoing over the last year or so. So April 6th, many of you may have been there at the city goal-setting workshop. We did do a pre-workshop survey, had over 900 responses to that survey about the goals, and at the workshop itself, we had about 200 attendees. So the results from the workshop were consolidated along with feedback and the survey results, et cetera. We took some information to our boards and commissions, did a follow-up survey after the goal-setting meeting, and then finally, on July 1, the goals were finalized by the city council at a city council meeting. In about November of 2019, we did publish a goals booklet, which Peggy's holding up here in front of me, that has all of this detailed information, as well as a checklist in the back for anybody who wanted to kind of keep track on their own of our status on the different goals. And so then today, February 22nd, we're here with an update to you. And then kind of on the side here, just to note that throughout this process, both before we started the goal-setting, as well as ongoing through the next year, staff is continuing to work on all of these objectives that you're gonna hear about today. So just a little bit on the structure. The five overall goals, as I read them off there a minute ago, these are sort of aspirational and inspirational goals. They're pretty broad, they're pretty high-level, really looking at what kind of city do we want to be, what's our vision for Petaluma. And so within each goal, there are two to five objectives, and so those drill down a little bit more, a little bit more specific on a department or a topic area that we want to address. For example, housing, or technology, or finances, emergency preparedness, so they're a little bit more specific, and there are a total of 17 of those, and you'll see them delineated on those sheets, either on your paper here or in the back of the room. And then within each of those objectives, we have a number of work plan items. So these are very specific, a task, a project, a program that we want to implement, things like that, and there are a total of 157 of those. So you'll notice in the comments section of each of the goals, the first few words kind of classify each of these work plan items into a number of different statuses. So they're either completed, nearly complete, in progress, ongoing, or not yet initiated. So we tallied all of those up, and this pie chart attempts to show that. So when we looked at all of the goals, or all of the work plan items that are either completed, nearly completed, or in progress, that's a total of about 71% of all of those 157. So we've been working hard to get these done, or at least get them initiated, and then we'll be continuing to work over the next year. And so about 16% are complete or nearly complete, and another 55% are in some version of in-progress at this point in time. And so with that, our Finance Director, Cory, and I are going to go through Goal Number 1, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian. Good morning, everyone. I'll start us off by going over those highlighted work plan items that have been completed or are nearly complete, and Goal 1, a city that works for you. So as Peggy mentioned, the numbers are referenced tied back to the document if you want to look at more detail. So start off with the first item there. A budget and brief document has been developed that provides highlights in an easy-to-understand format, which will be rolled out with next year's budget document. We were able to reinstate a full-time traffic engineer position that will be focused on traffic signal management. The city has expanded transit services on key corridors. An inventory of road paving projects was presented and discussed at the Pavement Management Council Workshop held on January 6. We've continued to encourage and promote Petaluma Transit Ridership by offering free service during certain events, and work closely with our partners in the community on a variety of promotional programs. A centralized and dedicated communications department that manages a robust communications program that emphasizes two-way, ongoing community engagement has been established. A template and process has been developed for providing post-meeting summaries of all council and planning commission meetings. A citywide social media team has been developed, and a calendar has been created for citywide information. Guidelines for making public record requests is now available on the city's website. The IT master plan is drafted and will be presented to council in March. And finally, an exciting new city website has been launched. It actually launched in December. Updates and improvements are ongoing at this time, but it is available for all to view at cityofpetaluma.org. And I'll pass it back to Brian for the remaining work plan item status updates.
Okay, just a couple of photos here. You'll notice in each of the goals, we have tried to throw in a few photos to just highlight a few of the accomplishments so far. So the upper, the upper left there, you'll see just a screenshot of our new Facebook page. In the upper right is the new website that a few folks have mentioned here, so cityofpetaluma.org. That's been completely revamped. Cory referenced some of the transit improvements. We've just got the bus there. And then the lower right is a little snapshot of one of the surveys that we did and some of the goal-setting things that we've done over the last year. So I will talk about some items that are in progress. You'll notice, because in-progress is such a large category, we've got a lot of things going, we've really, on each of these in-progress slides, we've tried to just pick out a few of the highlights, like five or six things that are where there's been some substantial progress to date. So we are in process of developing a fiscal sustainability plan that looks at all of our revenues, all of our expenditures, and all of our long-term financial issues to try to bring a comprehensive, integrated plan back to the community. We've held three of those workshops. There are many more to come in March, April, and May, so stay tuned for those. We are working on an internship program with the Junior College and Sonoma State University, sort of a management fellowship program, to bring Masters of Public Administration students to the city to do some great work for us, and then they get some real-world work experience in a public agency. Our human resources and risk management departments have been hard at work to do a significant amount of staff training, both required state or federally mandated training, as well as just safety and workplace security training, and any other types of training or education that will help our staff be more effective. Road work is critical here. We've completed the Sonoma Mountain Parkway repave, I believe Maria Drive is gonna be coming up this summer, so that's exciting, and then North McDowell the following summer, so lots to look forward to there. We are working on updating the city's bicycle and pedestrian master plan. I believe the initial draft of that was actually previewed this month, February, for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, and then we're looking to 2021, end of 2021, to get that completely finalized. And then we are in process of implementing an online permitting system. That contract actually just went to council, I believe, last month, and so our IT department will be working on getting that fully up and running by next summer. So then just a couple that we haven't initiated yet. We do have a city charter, so we are a charter city. We have sort of a local constitution here in Petaluma, and we are looking to potentially update that. That is a large, lengthy process with a lot of resident engagement, and ultimately has to go to the voters to approve new city charters. That has not been initiated yet. And then we would love to be able to submit an application for the Helen Putnam Award of Excellence, which is a program run by the League of California Cities to highlight programs or projects in different cities that are really outstanding, that are really award-worthy. And so Petaluma, I believe, has never won that award before, and we would love to be able to put our name on the Helen Putnam Award at some point here in the near future. So I think that is it for Goal Number 1.
Want to bring that back to council for questions or comments?
So we can start with council comment, and then we will go to public comment. So if anybody wants to speak to anything that they have heard in this area, or they think that's something that they want to talk about might work in this area, please fill out the card and take it to the clerk. So let's start with... Oh, does anybody want to start it? Okay, go ahead.
Question of staff, item number 19 here. Do we know yet how many bikes we are going to have in Petaluma on that bike share?
Just for clarity, because not everybody has the sheets in front of them, maybe if you just would say what 19 is or whatever, so that people can see, hear what that is before the comments come.
Absolutely. So Goal Number 19 here is to implement community bike share program and explore other multimodal transportation offerings. So the response here in terms of being in progress, that we're working with the SETA on a bike share program, we don't talk about other multimodal transportation offerings, but I had a question about the actual number of bikes. Do we know that yet?
We have staff here for you.
Good morning. Jared Hall, Transit Manager for the city. That was... Thank you. That was actually approved this past Monday by the SETA Board to award the contract to Gacha Bikes, and it'll be installing 300 electric assist bikes throughout the Sonoma Running Corridor. So the exact number of bikes that are coming to Petaluma is to be determined, but for the whole corridor, it'll be 300 bikes, at all the major municipalities and smart stations.
So I heard a number of 30-something. Does that seem about right, or do you know yet?
There's been zero discussion on how many communities get which bike specifically, but that's something we're working through now with SETA and all the other jurisdictions to determine the exact number for Petaluma.
And Jared, we have the opportunity... This is the pilot program, but we have an opportunity to grow this program, so this is just a pilot program right now.
Absolutely. This is a three-year pilot program with the additional option to expand it annually beyond that, or to add additional bikes if we elect to do so down the road.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. And then a question about Goal Number 28, which is consider a program to make some downtown streets pedestrian-only. And we talked about clovia, which is an opportunity to actually close down Petaluma Boulevard North and South, possibly, for one day for a bicycle community event. But that's just one thing, and I wondered if we had the opportunity to explore when this goal was set. It was more like, you know, in our downtown, closing down Kentucky, for instance, one Sunday a month, or, you know, for, again, community gathering and more pedestrian opportunities. And I'm wondering if we have any more on that.
Good morning. Jason Beatty, Public Works Director. Yeah, we haven't brought that forward yet. It's something we're in the initial stages of looking at. You're, of course, aware with PIBAC on January 7, that idea was introduced, and yeah, staff needs to find the time to research how to implement that and kind of bring it forward as a proposal, something to consider for council.
And the one last thing I had here. Goal Number 33 was develop and publish public record request guidelines on the city's website, and I'm wondering if we have guidelines for responsiveness to those. Is that for our city manager?
I was gonna have our city attorney respond.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, council and community members. Eric Danley, City Attorney. Can you elaborate, Councilmember Fisher? Do you mean... Because the law, the Public Records Act prescribes our response requirements. We have to respond to requests within 10 days, and that can be extended up to an additional 14 days when we have to... There's voluminous records that are implicated, or where there's multi-department coordination responding. And then the law says we have to respond promptly. There's not a set deadline in terms of production, but it has to be prompt, and that means that as soon as we can produce the responsive, non-exempt records. And we typically, for large requests, to expedite the production, we'll do that on a rolling basis, so that as we're gathering information, we're providing to the requesters. And frequently, we're now also seeing that the production is multimodal, so we'll be providing files on the city's website, or giving links to files that already exist on the website, as well as we may be producing hard copies. We may also be arranging with requesters to come and view records onsite and inspect them that way, which is also a right that the public has to view the records of which the city's the custodian. So that's pretty well set in the law, and...
And I would just add, you know, the more, the better our technology gets, the easier it will be to respond to some of these PRAs that are pretty voluminous, and the more things that we get digitized, we'll be much easier to respond.
The other thing I would add to is that with the new website, which is still evolving and getting populated with information, it's a better, more interactive structure for us, and it's kind of a best practice for cities, and one which we're, you know, we're implementing, to have as much frequently accessed information on there already, so people don't need to submit public records requests, they can just access it right on the site. So that's a good way to speed up response to that we're looking at. Thanks.
Okay, well, I'd actually like to jump in on this issue. Under the question of charter changes, that's a very big and expensive thing to do, and it's something that really does take a lot of community interaction because the charter is the founding document of our city. So when you make changes, they should be very careful. But we also have the ability to make council policy changes in terms of how we as a policy, as a council, operate. And I think in... I find this to be responsive to your concerns about public record requests and how we get out to the public what is actually happening in the decision-making policy of the council. I would like to see more transparency in terms of how council members are coming to their decision-making. Are they meeting with members of the public? Are they meeting with developers? Who are they talking to? How extensive are those conversations? And I think that some of that unknown aspect of those questions is what prompts a lot of public records requests. So I think that the more transparent we can be as an official policy, where we state, "I have met with this developer this many times," you know, "or I have exchanged emails or texts or whatever," or "I have met with this neighborhood group this many times," you know, that's the kind of thing I think that would really go a long way to relieving the concerns that people have. And so... Well, that's it. We're not... No, this is a workshop, and we really want to behave ourselves just as if you were in city council, and we don't do that. Thank you. But anyhow, that's something that I think that we could look at in terms of policy changes. It's a little bit short of a charter change, but something that I think is much more responsive to our community and will make us operate better as a council.
Mayor, just quickly in response, a lot of jurisdictions, and not just the council, but subordinate bodies like the planning commission that are involved in responding to development applications, have procedural rules requiring that the members declare their ex parte contacts related to the project when it comes before the decision. So that's something that... It is a good practice, and that would be a way to address what you raised, and we could do it in the council rules if that was something the council desired to do.
And we've actually drafted some council policy changes last year, so we can bring that as holistic package to...
Okay, well, it's something I'd certainly like the council to consider. So on that note, is there other questions? Councilmember King, and then, okay, one down there.
Yes, you do. Can somebody pass the microphone down? Thank you. Sharing technology.
Hello. Is it working? Thank you. Well, I'm looking at the goals that I submitted about a year ago to the city manager. And I think the possibility that a city charter review is on our list has come from that. And while I recognize that there's pretty significant expense to going through that, one of the things I would recommend to do that is to try to establish some type of committee amongst the public, and I had down at least two council members who were appointed by the council to examine the potential changes and make recommendations to the council, along with some workshop and public meetings. Our charter, I don't believe, has been updated in 1947? Seventies, okay. I didn't say in my lifetime, but I believe I lived through the seventies. So I need, probably need verification. I'd like to see that happen at least in the next couple of years, so that it doesn't drift. There are some things in the charter that are remarkably outdated, just in terms of language alone. I do believe how we govern ourselves should be examined from time to time, and I'd like to see that, at least get a cost estimate of the cost, because we're gonna have a chance to talk further about our finances later on. And if this is cost prohibitive, that's one thing, but I think it's something I see.
Councilmember McDonald.
Thank you. I'm too very enthused about today and all the specific actions that are being taken or accounted for here, and I think it speaks really well on the staff's outreach and change of attitude, communication, and engagement. But it's important that we remember that's two-way street as well, and this is, you know, a huge gathering of concerned citizens in the room, but we need to... concerned citizens in the room. But we need to engage more of the public in the conversation. All too often, we don't hear from enough of the audience. Now, I know there is pushback when an audience, a citizen, does ask for specific city function to occur, and it doesn't. And you feel like engagement isn't valuable, but it is still very valuable. And please encourage your friends. Please discuss with people of differing opinions, and bring all that in. I love the drill down on specific. We can measure how many goals we did how well on a percentage basis. But I think we have the major goals still out there. The city that works for everyone, the environmental legacy of the five. And it would be fun to get a metric on whether we think we're moving the needle on the broad goal as well as the short goal. And for me, an awful lot of that is a housing consideration, and often not directly within the city's hands. But still, the city, the council, need to help focus on getting and getting right the development opportunities. So I'd like to see more of a measure on the meta-goals as well as the drill-down goals.
I'm not seeing anyone else on the council right now, but so I will just add another issue that I think we should be proactive on, and I think generally comes around here. And that is the whole question of district elections. This is something that other cities in our county have been sued on, and have had to move to district elections. And if we are not proactive on it, we have an immediate $30,000 bill as soon as we get the letter from the person who has been going around sending this, starting these actions. So I think that if we were to get involved and look at that, and see whether or not that's something that would serve our city, I think that we would be able to at least avoid a $30,000 fine, and look at what, you know, the best kind of elections are for our city. And that also would go in with the charter review. So just throwing that out there. I have no opinion on district elections. And I'm not necessarily in favor of them. I'm not sure they do what people think they're going to do. But I would be happy to have that discussion. So is there anyone from the, oh, Councilmember Healy, I'm sorry. You know, it's just, we're all a little cattywampus. One second. Yes, the unknown quantity. Claire, do we have anybody from the public? Okay, we do. Okay. So go ahead, Councilmember Healy.
Thank you. I was just gonna, on that topic, I was at a meeting yesterday, the Legislative Committee of Mayors and Councilmembers Association at the Senator Dodd. And the word on the street is that the next batch of demand letters is likely to go out after the census results sometime next year. So we do have some time to prepare for that.
Thank you. So Claire, do you want to recall the, or give them to me, I guess? The process is very changed today. So, thank you. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. Okay. Brian Barnacle is the first person, and we have one minute per person, followed by Dennis Posake. There's room at this front table, so if you are the next person, if you might want to come up and sit up here, we can then just not have a lot of travel time. Thank you.
Morning, everybody. Congratulations on the dredging. I think it's a great example of what happens when you prioritize something and then make it happen. My concern, I think, shared with Councilmember McCallis, or McDonnell, is that we need to prioritize the goals so that we feel the ones that are going to make the biggest impact. For me, it's a long-term planning. We're seeing a lot of things come forward that do or don't, you know, aren't consistent with our general plan. And, you know, we can say that our general plan's out of date, but if we don't prioritize crafting a new vision, we can't implement it. It feels like everything's being done in isolation. I, you know, so I just really encourage us to try and prioritize things and make community engagement. I really appreciate your message about that, Mayor. I think being transparent, I think it's really important, so that we know what's going on. Often times I hear, whoop!
Okay. So I know it's brief, and I'm gonna say this as well. You know, things are gonna come up in a workshop, so that if you've already spoken, and you want to speak again, submit another card. If there are lots of cards, I'm gonna take the people who haven't spoken first. But I will give people a second chance, you know, because things do come up. So Dennis Posake, followed by Jennifer Benedetti.
Thanks. I guess I'm gonna echo a couple things Brian said. First is that we talked about city charter, zoning, general plan. I don't know as much about the details of this stuff as you guys, and I know it's difficult to change. But I think we're almost in an emergency situation to change some of these things, because some of these housing decisions that are being made, that are not acceptable to a large portion of the community, are defended by the city charter. At least I see staff reports that include that kind of thing. The second thing is that I think we need to declare an affordable housing emergency, as well as the climate emergency. And I think we, again, as Brian said, we need to prioritize these things. And finally, to have a city that works for everyone, I think we've got to find a different time for the meetings that are addressing the stuff that the city cares about. Meaning that a lot of these decisions are being made between 11:00 at night and 1:00 in the morning. And people, it's hard to get people there or to stay at that time.
Jennifer Benedetti, followed by Justin Tomola.
Hi there. Thank you, guys, for hosting this. And this is really lovely. It's lovely to be here. And I just am speaking to, actually, on behalf of an organization called TIDE, which is the Team for Inclusivity, Diversity, and Equity, which began a year ago. And it's a grassroots organization. That is formed of local parents. And we're really concerned about equity and diversity, inclusivity in our city. And we would like to call for the city to make a commitment to trainings in equity and diversity. We would like to see more diverse representation in all of the different commissions and boards in Petaluma. And actually, we'd like to have a commission or a board specifically focused on diversity and equity in our city that kind of helps to inform and train people much in leadership. Thank you very much.
Justin Tomola, are you here? Okay. Janice Kader-Thompson, followed by Mark Howe.
I was wondering if Coco could have been at all. She'll take it. I'm actually here, I want to talk about transportation, and that I went to the SETA meeting last week, Snowy County Transportation Authority. There's 10 items on a list that the city has. And there's, streets in front of our homes are not part of that. Sidewalks are really not part of that. Undergrounding utilities isn't part of that. And what other communities were inputting, what they really felt was important for their community, were a lot of those issues. And the city of Petaluma has $111 million for one project, Rainier, crosstown connectors included in that, and that's probably at least $40 million. And the streets in front of people's homes are not going to get done. And I think we want to be a more walkable community. And this SETA list needs to be daylighted, so the public really knows what's on it. And I want to hear what every council member has to say. And I'd like to have a workshop on that, because we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars. And the streets in front of people's homes and the potholes are really not included in it. Thank you.
Yeah. Mark Howe, and, followed by Judy Alwell.
Hi. I was actually wanting to speak to something a little bit later. Do you want to speak now?
Sure. If you want to, do you want to talk later?
Yeah.
I see what the topic is. Okay. All right. I'll get you for later.
Thank you.
Okay. Judy Alwell, followed by Paige Green.
I'm a property owner in Petaluma. I do not live in the city limits, but I own many pieces of rental property in the city. And 25% of my properties that I own are below market value for the rent, so I'm doing better than the city. I really feel that the city should have a license, that we should be licensed. I own property in other cities, and because I do, I have to get a business license. And I think the city's missing out, even though it would cost me $900 if it was $100 a license. I think the city should do it, then you can keep a tab on how many properties are rentals and how many are owned or occupied. I'm also opposed to the Graylock project, because three of my properties are on Jess Avenue. And so I was very disappointed by the city that that was passed. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Paige Green, followed by Rich Inman. Oh, actually, Rich wants to talk about fireworks. Do you want to speak later? I don't see you here. Okay.
One year ago, we heard stories of racism and discrimination from brave high school students and community members describing how hard it is to live and go to school in Petaluma. After hearing these testimonials, we created TIDE. And for the past year, we've been making, working to make schools more safe and equitable for all of our students. Schools alone cannot be responsible for taking a stand against hate and creating safe and equitable communities. The Southern Poverty Law Center reports that hate groups are growing. There are 1,020 hate groups across the country, and 83 in California. TIDE would like Petaluma to make a commitment to denounce hate and actively work to create a city that works for all. Our representation is pretty limited here. And also, number 34, it says, we'll have translation and reach out to other community members. Would love to see that happen. And so support diversity, equity, inclusion, and policymaking and delivery of services adopting an equity statement, continuing DEI training, and utilizing an equity lens. Install diversity and equity in everything. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rich Inman, are you here? Did you want to speak now? Absolutely. No, it's perfectly fine.
So I'm the Secretary of McDowell Drug Task Force, and every year, we have the Safe and Same fireworks booth over by Safeway, which greatly contributes to a lot of our tasks that we do throughout the year. So basically, I just wanted to say that I strongly support the Safe and Same fireworks, because if you take away all of those, you're gonna have more of the illegal ones, which are higher decibel, and will cause more property and personal damage. So I strongly support the council to continue the use of Safe and Same fireworks. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Ben Peters, followed by Barry Buzzowitz.
Good morning, everyone. This is about objective one, work plan item one, about fiscal sustainability. So something that we need to do, in addition to tracking our costs, is to track our spending on our resources. That's electric, that's natural gas, that's gasoline, that's miscellaneous fossil fuels, propane, et cetera, et cetera. So if you actually read the city's budget, electric, gas, they're not even lineaded out, okay? So you can't even come up with a greenhouse gas emission proxy, because we're not even tracking what we're consuming, right? So it's a pretty basic concept that you can't manage what you don't measure. Now, it's easy, yet I've requested this a couple times at various city council meetings. And I'd like to make this request now to the public. Let's include these things in our budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. Barry Buzzowitz, followed by Justin Tomola, are you back? Okay, I'm gonna just put you aside. And followed by Daven McCarron? McCracken? Maybe it's Daven? David? Okay. All right. It's you. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Barry. Go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm addressing housing and climate emergency, and the city that works for everyone. Goal number one, object, objective number two, item 22, establish a second station at Corona, second smart station. I'm a member of Urban Chat. Our members and friends have been exhorting Loma's partners for over a year, for many months, to come up with a better plan for the smart station. The current plan that seems destined to pass city council is not transit-oriented. In a time of climate emergency, it's a very bitter pill to swallow. Another unsatisfactory plan, I really appreciate the feedback I've gotten from several council members who have information, and I'm not privy to, that, you know, we're inclined to go ahead with it. And maybe that's necessary, could at least be greatly improved. We've been working hard to get a better plan there. Improvements on the current one, I think, are possible. And I hate to see another unsatisfactory disappointment.
Thank you. Mark Howe? Oh, no, you're, no, David, David. Mark is for later. Okay. David.
Hey, thank you for having this meeting here. I was just curious how we're looking at the cost-benefit basis with the bike paths, and if we really need to be spending so much money on bike paths that no, very few people are using them. A good example is, I've been here 20 years, and on McDowell, the lanes reduced from four to two, put in a bike path or bike lanes. I've probably counted about four or five people in the five years before the bike path was built. In the 15 years it's been there, I think I've counted three people. And one of the people riding their bike was actually riding on the sidewalk. So we need to figure out if it's really feasible to be spending more money. I mean, there's thousands and thousands of dollars that we're spending on bike paths. That money could possibly be used somewhere else. This isn't Hollywood set. It's not Kevin Costner. It's not, you know, is this a situation where if we build it, they will come? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So now we're on to our second goal.
Good morning, council, members of the public. I'm Eric Danley, the City Attorney, and with me is Jason Beatty, Public Works Director. And we are going to go through item two, which is our environmental legacy. And we've kind of split up the slides and the feedback in terms of the goal's progress to take turns. And I'll be starting on the first two. So the first one, priority 45, in the category of completed and newly completed work plan items. That's regarding considering acquiring new development to participate in the Petaluma Clean Power Evergreen Program, which is a more costly and more sustainable source for power. And the answer with respect to that, it's in the chart two, is that the city lacks the authority to require consumers to select Cal Green. However, we have developed conditions of approval that encourage project applicants to select Cal Green. So that's the status with respect to that. 48 is adopt an ordinance creating and empowering a climate commission. And we've done that. The commission was established by ordinance in August 5, 2019. The whole committee meets monthly, subcommittees meet more frequently. And the commission is developing a climate action plan for submission to council. And the next item is Jason's.
Thanks, Eric. Good morning. So this one, I'm very excited to talk about the biomass-to-biofuel project that's going on out at Ellis Creek Water Recycling Facility is nearly complete. We are in the startup phase. Last week, the first time we had a recology front loader fueled up with renewable CNG. It was methane gas from our digesters out there, which is, thank you for your contribution to that. It's been cleaned and compressed, and now it's been, it's been put into recology's trucks. So we're just in the startup phase. There's a lot of moving parts on this project, so it's gonna be a slow ramp up. Recology's been a very good partner. Ecology's been a very good partner to work with on that front, so very exciting for us. Moving on to work plan item number 57, improve integration of transit and planning and land use related processes and decision making. Internally, we've taken some steps here to better integrate our transit manager, Jared Hall, into looking at development projects, making sure that we're including bus stops and transit oriented development in the projects that come forward. We also brought forward initial look at transit orientated development designations as well. Turn it back over to you, Eric.
Thank you, Jason. So item 60 is adopt a citywide single-use plastic and polystyrene ban, and that's been completed. It was adopted on November 18 of 2019. A single-use article ban has been drafted. Our draft's complete. It's expected to be presented to the council in April, and what you'll see when that comes forward, at least in its current form, is it would integrate in the code where we are also, where we're already addressing polystyrene ban and address single-use articles and prohibit those. And I know staff plans to let outreach with respect to that, and so that's going to be ongoing as we get ready to present that. Back to you, Jason. Thanks.
Great. And then item 65, another one to highlight, research and pursue gray water use and rainstorm water catchment options for new development. And we've updated our building codes to include requirement for a gray water valve in single-family homes. So we made great progress on that as well. And then here's just some photo highlights of some of these complete, nearly completed projects. And then I'd also say, as part of our website and outreach, we really are trying to let people know when we are completing these. And that's a new thing for us, pushing out that little social media as well as when we get these things done.
So next in the category of in progress, work plan items. For the highlights, item 43 is consider adopting energy codes that exceed current requirements, referred to as REACH codes. As many of you may be aware, the city recently adopted its triennial update to the California Building Standards Code. And one feature of that adoption is that in our local amendments to the code, which were permitted to do under the state law scheme, the CalGreen building requirements were increased from tier one in the prior triennial adoption to tier two in this year's. Staff are also working on, in response to the council's direction, an all-electric code that's expected to be brought before the council in the first quarter of 2020. And so we're conducting research with respect to that and tracking developments with respect to that in some of our neighboring jurisdictions. And let's see, 47, so 47 is mine two, that's adopt a zero-waste ordinance. The council adopted a zero-waste resolution July 15, 2019. Other waste reduction efforts are in progress, like for example, the single-use article ban I talked about already. And back to you, Jason.
Great, thank you, Eric. Work plan item number 49, another one I'm very excited about. On January 6, council authorized staff to move forward forming an agreement with Forefront Power to install 629 kilowatts of solar power at four different city facilities, the police department, community center, and airport, and the city pool. And we're working with Forefront to develop that agreement, and that will be coming back to council. And we also are continuing to look for other opportunities to expand solar panels at our different facilities, so we continue to look for those as well. Item number 52, we're moving forward on many fronts on this item, developing a framework for the city and transit vehicle fleet to move from fossil fuel-based to hybrid renewable compressed natural gas and/or electric vehicles, and then continue to pursue grant funding for those opportunities there. We have asked for and received authorization for three electric vehicles within our pool vehicle fleet. Every time we look at purchasing vehicles, we have a policy to make sure, see what the latest technology is out there, if we can get to electric or non-fossil fuel-based vehicles that'll meet our needs. We continue to do that every time we go out for purchasing. We're also looking right now at becoming more agile with our fleet management. You know, in past, we bought a vehicle and we put very low miles on these vehicles as we use them as our mobile workshops. But we keep them for years and years because that means the most financial sense at the time. But now, we see technology changing over the next five, 10 years with electric vehicles, hybrids. We need to be more agile with that. So we're starting to look at how we can do that and not need to keep these vehicles so long and how we can maybe adapt to the new technology that's coming out. So that's in the works. And then a big piece of this, our transit manager is working with STTA on the electrification study for our transit fleet, and that was just delivered last month, which is a big step in that process. And then I'm also looking at grant funding opportunities there to electrify the transit fleet. Work item 63, reimagining maintenance practices for managing city parks and open spaces. We are working on upgrading our integrated pest management plan, which outlines the pesticides and herbicides that we use. We, of course, there's a ban on glyphosate on city properties, and we have that within our contracts with our landscape maintenance contracts. We're now currently benchmarking with other municipalities how they have implemented this or in the process of implementing these practices. And we're also some landscape maintenance workshops that we've partnered with hosting. There's one, there's a flyer about one at the back table. I encourage you to look at that. We're bringing our staff there so we can get, you know, look forward and figure out how we can better manage our parks.
So work plan item 68, the report is really the same as for item 43, and the effort so far involves increasing the CalGreen standard from tier one to tier two and staff work on the all-electric code process that I mentioned earlier. Which then takes us to the not-yet-initiated category, Jason.
And then this is item number 61, ban the use and sale of glyphosate. And we're assuming this is for throughout the city, personal use and all that. We have not been able to get to this item. There's a lot of things to consider with this, to move this forward, and we have not yet picked that up and started doing all the research that we need to do to bring it to council.
Thanks, Jason. One thing I'll add on that item is that I don't believe our police powers as a city is as extensive as a ban of use of that, but that'll be one of the things we look at when we take up that item. And finally, work plan item 62, examine the urban growth boundary expiration date beyond 2025 via ballot measure and develop a white paper on options. Many of you may know and some may not that our urban growth boundary is actually codified in our general plan in the land use item, and it is a voter-approved element of the general plan, which means its extension is subject to voter approval and its amendment is subject to voter approval. So it makes sense that that would be considered as part of the overall general plan 2020 update effort as that starts moving forward. And that covers our items. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll start council comment with Vice Mayor Fisher and then Councilmember Hurney. Oh, Councilmember Hurney. I'll let you two work it out.
I thought you wanted to jump ahead of me on this one. So the first thing I have is item number 42, the work plan, find waste for city operations to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, et cetera, et cetera. And I know we talked about in one of our, I believe it was a council meeting, about doing an audit of our city facilities, and I think this would be an appropriate place for that, to really look at what we are using in terms of our electricity and other resources. And then, so number 47, adopt a zero-waste ordinance. You know, this was, I actually had to go look this up because it was so non-monumental when we did it. And I guess my question is, is that what are we doing in terms of that adoption? Is it, I just want to make sure it's not something that we're just checking and saying we did this, but that we're actually looking at these recommendations and what we adopted and moving forward with some of these specific items in terms of how we get to zero waste.
Patrick, are you still here? Yay.
Oh, yeah.
Patrick also serves, well, he serves many hats, but he is also serving as our sustainability guru.
And I'm, okay, I'm also the Petaluma representative on the Zero Waste Sonoma Board of Directors, and so there's been a lot of discussion at that body, which represents all the cities and the county, in Sonoma County, on waste issues. So there are a number of initiatives that are coming up. There's a big statewide initiative for reducing organics that are going into our garbage and then into the landfills and creating the methane emissions from that. So there's a state legislation, SB 1383, that's going to make all the cities throughout the state adopt a lot of measures specific to organics. And those items are still in draft from the state, so that's going to be coming. So we're going to be looking at ordinances that we're going to need, the state's going to require us to adopt as a result of that. And there's a host of other issues with construction debris and reducing plastic that they're looking at at the Zero Waste Sonoma Board as well. So there's going to be a lot of items that are going to be coming down and probably in the next year that we're going to be bringing before the council and looking for direction on them. So stay tuned, but yes, there's a lot, a lot in the works right now.
Thank you for that. If I can keep going, that's okay. Item number 50, engage the regional climate protection authorities, city council staff, and community members in the development of a citywide climate action plan. I'd like to include in this that we actually adopt and implement that plan that is actually in progress. No, the actual plan. So our climate commission is in the process through ad hoc committees, working with the community, to develop a climate emergency plan and what we're going to be able to do to address this existential crisis. And so I think here would be an appropriate place to put that. And then to note that it's actually something that's in progress, not just under discussion. Let me keep going. This, next item, number 56, update implementing zoning ordinance to ensure ability to provide full environmental review of all dissectionary projects. I guess this is in light of the McCorville case? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so, okay, so you're coming up with code updates for this quarter, great. And then number 63, reimagine maintenance park practices, practices for managing our city parks and open spaces. And I just want to voice the fact that, you know, we did, we're not using glyphosate, but we are using glyphosate, which is kind of a substitute, but still a fairly toxic chemical. And so I'm hoping that when we look at our IPMP plan, that we're addressing those issues. And that really, I think there's an opportunity to be using our parks and open spaces as a place to sequester carbon along with our other city facilities. And so I would hope that we include that, and I think that will be coming forward in, when we look at our climate action plan. And two other things I would like to add if I could or bring up. One is actually hiring a sustainability coordinator and making that a priority for us. And then the second thing is to take a look at development along our floodplain and in our river, along our river, and whether or not we can actually put a moratorium on that for the moment until we really understand what the impact of developing in that area is going to have on our climate and our ability to mitigate and have a resilient future. That's all I have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So to echo what the Vice Mayor just mentioned about carbon sequestration, I think I mentioned it maybe a month or two ago at a council meeting, about identifying locations that are on city-owned properties that might not necessarily be parks, if we can prioritize that to see where we can do more carbon sequestration on city-owned properties that are otherwise not being utilized to their fullest capability. When it comes to the integrated pest management plan, I'm sure I'm butchering of that, I would like to see that be a priority. It's been discussed at the council level for at least, I believe, two years now. And so I would like to see us make that a priority. A couple of smart, community members brought up prioritizing some of the goals or priorities, and I think that is one that, in my opinion, is, should be at the top of our list when we use the pesticides in our fields. And, you know, they then come into our homes as people, you know, don't always take their shoes off, and then you have kids that are exposed to that because they're playing on their carpet that just had, anyway, you get the point I'm making on that. And then as far as the ban the use of glyphosate, while I understand the point that was being made by the city attorney as far as our police powers regarding the use of glyphosate, we can, and it wouldn't be reinventing the wheel on this, there are other communities that have already banned the sale of it within their jurisdiction. And so looking at our lead California cities, you know, collective mind trust to see what other cities have done this already and just taking what they have and replacing, you know, the city of blank with Petaluma to make that a pretty easy, easily adopted program, I think, is important. Thank you.
So I wanted to go back to 52, which was the electric vehicle goal. And I just wanted to get a little more information for the benefit of the public about electric vehicles, because every time we purchase a vehicle, the question is asked at the council level, I ask or somebody else asks, is there an electric option? Is there a more environmentally sustainable option for the purchase of this vehicle? And what we find is that the technology is not there with a lot of, some of the heavier use vehicles, a lot of the public safety vehicles. So I just want people to be aware that we are asking that question, we are looking at that every time we do purchase a vehicle. But the technology is not there for some of these, and I just want people to be aware of that. And, you know, and I think certainly our police chief or fire chief can confirm that information.
Thank you. Just in terms of reviewing these goals, I do want to thank our staff and all of my colleagues for one of the items, which is the installation of solar panels on four city facilities is something I've really been interested in having done for my time on the council, and I'm glad we are at that point of moving that forward. So, you know, sometimes you want to, you want to point to the future, but on that one, I do want to thank our staff, because without our staff getting it done, it would not have gotten done. Going forward and pointing to the future, I'd like to see us expand our solar footprint to take another look. I know it's on here somewhere, of putting floating solar at our treatment plant. There are locations around the state and the country that have done that. It's another way of us expanding our clean electric footprint. And as our vehicles, over time, will become more electrified, we're going to need another source of power in the coming years. So the more we can produce internally, the less we have to pay externally. And lastly, we will, again, I know, look at shifting the city over to Evergreen. There is a substantial cost of that. The more that we have our own electricity that's produced internally, the less of that cost exists. And I know this is primarily designed for all of you to speak to all of us, but while you're here, I would ask... you're here, I would ask, Councilmember Kearney is also one who does this all the time as well, when you examine your electric bills, consider Sonoma Clean Power Evergreen Program, it will cost a little bit more to you, but it will help you reduce your carbon footprint. And that's something you can do. So please consider that.
Councilmember Healy, and then McDonald.
Thank you. So this is a comment on item 62 with respect to developing white papers on options around the urban growth boundary. And this is just a request for information, because I feel I'm flying a little bit blind here. Though, we're in the midst of our current RENA cycle, but they're starting to be buzzed that the next RENA cycle is going to at least double our workable housing targets, and I think we should try to get our arms around that. And so I'm asking staff to try to figure out what information is available now that can be shared with us. Thank you.
Do you want to explain what RENA is for the public?
So this is part of the state's ongoing campaign to require more housing throughout California, and they give us Regional Housing Needs Assessment is what the acronym is. And we, each jurisdiction, each city, each county gets specific targets for, I believe it's a six- or eight-year cycle. And it's broken down into income categories, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. And we're given very specific targets in each of those categories. And what I'm hearing is that the Los Angeles region is on a different cycle than us, and they're just rolling out their new RENA targets now, and there's quite a bit of shock and awe over what's happening. And I'm kind of expecting that to happen in the Bay Area region in a couple of years, but I'm hoping to get some advanced information on what we can expect.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the goal on gray water. I know that's getting down into the nitty-gritty kind of goals versus the big-picture goals, but I did hear that a diversion valve was included in new construction, but part of what I'd set up with that goal was that we would advise remodeling applicants that we would, that they have potential to have great savings of potable water if they do gray water at time of remodel. I think we get into setting rules for new development and forgetting that more work and benefit is possible within the built community than the level of growth that we see. So, you know, that could just be an ask to staff later. But similarly, I'm happy to see on the big picture that all the cities, our neighbors who went with the REACH code, just got their building codes approved in this area, the ones that went all-electric. And, you know, that was part of, it's always fun to see somebody succeed and know that you can jump in right behind with the same kind of success. So I'm happy to have seen that. But notwithstanding that, I think that we need to credit our planning commission for having similar goals at council, that every applicant that goes before the planning commission gets their arm twisted to do all the things we want to do in a REACH code, like all-electric development, like having EV in not just one or two of the apartment spaces, but in many, having many of the apartments all be EV outlet-ready, and having strong solar components to any of the development. Looping around the fact, I don't think what we've asked for, or advised remodeling applicants is maybe we should kind of put a little hint in their idea that when you do replace your main panel in a remodel, put in a 220 outlet for your EV. If we do more things to encourage, we're engaging more, communicating more, more transparent to our goals, I'd like to see us move more in that way.
Thank you. Back to Vice Mayor.
Well, I just forgot to mention this, and I guess pursuing that gray water, that same goal, number 65. We say that we've completed this, but it was research and pursuit of gray water use and rain and stormwater catchment options for the development, and we've not addressed the rain-water catchment options. And while I'm here, I'm just going to give a shout-out to Daily Act, so if anyone wants to know how to put in a gray water system, please contact them, and they'll let you know.
So I actually think we've covered a lot before we get to public comment here, but I do think that some of the goals that were not brought up on the work plan, but I think are very important, are, they are very similar, and they're 42 and 46. 42 is find ways for the city operations to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, conserve water, decrease waste, and minimize use of fossil fuels, and investigate and pursue options for carbon sequestration. Carbon sequestration, where it was, I agree with what was brought up by Councilmember, well, and Vice Mayor, both of you, and Kearney, Kearney was the other one. And then the other 46 is establish and promote a citywide sustainability program, leading with exemplary environmental practices. You know, I'm just going to look at those with a little bit of a twist and bring up the idea that what really has a huge impact on how we address the environment is something that Councilmember McDonald just brought up, and that is how we build going forward. And not only the standards to which we are holding development, but also where we're putting that development. I think those are really, really critical issues, because those are the decisions that will last for generations. And I agree with our Vice Mayor to be looking at the question of development along the river and looking at what the long-term effects of those, that might be, and considering a moratorium if need be, until we can update our general plan to address the change in the climate that is affecting this, including the sea level rise. So with that, I'm going to go to public comment, and starting off with, okay, Mark, do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak later? Carol Eber is first, followed by Teddy Herzog.
I understand that one of the items being discussed, one of the policies being discussed by the city council, is a ban on natural gas in the city of Petaluma. And I'm making the assumption that in new home construction, when a developer installs appliances, they will install electric induction stoves rather than the traditional old-time electric stove, because induction stoves are much more efficient. But I also caution you to review the research. Appliance warnings include something for individuals with pacemakers. And they caution individuals with pacemakers not to be aware of the dangers of induction stoves and about their use. So looking at the population of Petaluma and the age, I'm assuming that there'll be quite a few people with pacemakers. So I urge the city to carefully review the research before you-
We're on a minute level, so I'm sorry, but I think your point was very, very well-made. Thank you. Teddy Herzog, followed by Nicole Camarda.
Good morning. I'm a big proponent for putting as much density within walking distance of the train stations as we can bear to build right now. I think as a town, we've sprawled out as far as we're going to, and now we're building all the infill of the remaining vacant lots. And in the foreseeable future, we'll start going up, and whatever that is, 10 years down the line, we're going to want more density near the train station, walking distance of the train stations. I'm just wondering what we can do to be proactive now to start allowing taller buildings at the train stations. I guess this is really a general plan update kind of issue, but what can we do now to see where we want to be 10 and 20 years in terms of getting more housing density at the train station? And I believe this is also part of our affordable housing question as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Camarda, are you here? There you are, okay. And Pat Volmer.
Hi, good morning, council. I want to thank Mayor Barrett and Linda Fisher for taking such a strong stance on this environmental leadership goal. And with regards to item 63, park maintenance, I just wanted to remind everyone that the California EPA estimates that operating a commercial leaf blower for one hour, this would be the two-stroke motors, would emit more pollution than driving a 2016 Toyota Camry 1,100 miles. I think that would be a great thing for us to change, getting electric leaf blowers for our park maintenance. With regards to item 52, the city had several chances to add all-electric vehicles or hybrid vehicles to police and DPW this year, and chose not to make that happen at this time. So just a reminder that now is the time. And lastly, with regards to pesticides, I appreciate the city's stance and work with that group, but I noticed the other day that SMART is along their property within the city limits in hazmat suits and industrial sprayers. So work with the contractors in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Volmer, followed by Patricia Tuttle Brown. And again, I'm calling the second person so you can kind of move forward, so we're moving this along a little faster, but Patricia's already at the first table. So, thank you.
Okay. I live on North McDowell Boulevard, and I'm in this zone where none of this applies to the mobile home parks. They are owned by people that do not live anywhere near us, and we are all paying the same water bill together, we share it. I can't control how the water is wasted. I can't do solar panels. Is there anything the city can do with the owners and helping us so that we can get past that? And I can have solar panels, because I know they put them on mobile homes now. Can you help me, or can you tell me how I can find out I can become more carbon, whatever? And, and the wasting of water is driving me nuts. I mean, the sprinklers that are watering the streets and stuff, and we all pay the bill, we share the bill, and it's frustrating. So how can the city help me be more carbon footprint? And there's mobile homes all along North McDowell Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Tuttle Brown, followed by Traythan Heckman, also at the front table. One minute, okay. You know, most of what I'm saying is a praise to staff and the new city manager. I feel like I've been working for 25 years on three items that are on the docket very, very openly. One of them is Lafferty Ranch, which is number 155 under Places We Value, and it's actually going to be discussed, it's actually on a list, and many of us have worked for years on this issue. Number two is the Climate Commission. 1993, I saw where a committee, which I was on, had its power, kind of, first, we had power, we could make our own agendas. I suggest, the Climate Commission doesn't have the power to change or tell council what to do, but they, if they could make their own agendas, they could give input on Corona before the council goes to talk about it, and there might be more input. Number three is, 20 years ago, me and my husband went to Ericham Park and said, please don't use this poison, and they said, okay, well, we'll put you on the no-spray list. I'm like, there's a no-spray list? Thank you. Thank you. Traythan Heckman, followed by Sandy Potter.
I first just want to express huge gratitude for the leadership on council, on staff, and in the community, because I think we've come an enormously long way in the last year towards achieving our goal of becoming a municipal leader in sustainability by acknowledging and starting to address the climate emergency. I also want to say that we've done a lot in the last year, and as we've seen, the world is still burning, our communities are still burning, we constantly see record fires, record temperature rises, record ice melt, and so we need to continue to step up more. And that there's nothing more important we could do for the health, the safety, the economic viability, the thriveability of our communities than to do, as Supervisor Linda Hopkins mentioned to me on Thursday, we must look at every single decision we make through the lens of the climate emergency. And if we do that, the community will rise up and support staff and council and work together. And this isn't just for you sitting there, this is for all of us to really center on how do we do this in our lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sandy Potter, followed by David Keller.
So thank you very much for this gathering, and I'm going to just go from the global to the individual, and this is a little bit of an advertisement for electric vehicle use. There's huge advancements that have been made in the electric vehicles, and we've extended their range, we've brought their costs down, but a lot of folks aren't aware that because an electric vehicle doesn't have an engine, it doesn't have a crankcase, it doesn't leak oil, it doesn't have a transmission, and so it's environmentally superior in a lot of ways. And I just took mine in for a 30,000-mile maintenance check, and it was only $150, so that was a huge difference from my gasoline-powered vehicle. So anyone who's concerned about climate change, I think should be driving an electric vehicle and at least make a commitment for the next time they purchase a vehicle, that it be an electric vehicle. But I had a couple of ideas. One of them is that I transition to driving an EV later in life, and I see a lot of teenagers out there, and I think it would be really great if teen drivers were started out on electric vehicles, and that's our future. The only other thing I wanted to say is more charging stations would be great, and enforcing the limits at the, I see gasoline-powered vehicles parking at the charging station that is for EVs, and there should be no reason that that needs to continue with a large garage. Thank you.
Thank you. David Keller, followed by Catherine Reinhardt.
Hi, good morning, and thank you for doing this. Really appreciate the change in focus that our city manager and council have brought to future studies and goal-setting. First, very quickly, DUTRIT is back, they shrank the size of their project, and they are claiming that they don't need any wetland permits. This will be a supervisory issue, and once again, we're going to be asking the city for your support in talking to supervisors and county, and I'll get you more information shortly on that. We need to preserve the floodplain capacity and function. It's not just containing water in the river channel, it's allowing water to spread out, drop sediment, and slow down. And by channelizing and thinking that you're going to do flood protection or continue flood protection by channelizing the river and creating terraces is a huge mistake. The development upstream of the flood weir, that is the top of the CORE project, is a mistake. The CORE was very clear about that. Please-
That's your, that's your minute.
Okay. Please take a look at Tulsa, Oklahoma, and what they did with their flood disasters. It's a great example that we should use. Thank you.
And I do want to remind people that they can submit additional comments online on our survey, there's place for personal comments, so please do that.
Will do. Thank you.
Including links, and should you have them.
Lots of links.
Catherine Reinhardt, and followed by Gail Burnett.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Thank you all for being here and hosting this event. So Catherine Reinhardt, local Petaluma historian, Good Egg as well. I would like to speak to Objective 2 promotes sustainable building practices, number 68, where it's implement sustainable building practices that go above and beyond basic building code requirements. And I just want to remind the council and our commissions about historic properties, and that there are opportunities to make historic homes and other buildings energy-efficient, but they need to be done in a manner that's consistent with the character of the building. So one size does not fit all when you're talking about solar panels and new windows and so forth. And so we have a great opportunity. We have, we have the California Preservation Foundation is a terrific nonprofit that provides all sorts of training and workshops that I'd like to see the city partner with, and we have our Historic and Cultural Preservation Committee, and I'm happy to assist on this front. Thank you.
Please submit that to our survey response. Gail Burnett, followed by Sheila Baker.
Okay. I'm starting with item number 63, which is to encourage everybody to consider making bicycles more useful, safer, and facilitating that for the whole community, because that's going to, you know, eliminate the need for people to drive around in their car as much. And so one of the things in a park maintenance is to keep bikes paths clear, keep the brambles out of them, to keep the puncture vine out of them, and to resolve jurisdictional issues with the county when somebody recognizes that you guys are not in sync as to who's supposed to take care of what path. And also to keep the debris out of the bike paths and lanes so that we can ride without-
And also to keep the debris out of the bike paths and lanes so that we can ride without fear of flat tires every time we go out. And then I just wanted to make one other comment, that we could address the fact that people picking up their kids from schools sit there running their engines for I don't know how long, 10, 15 minutes at a time, and as we ride by on our bicycles and we ride by all these parked cars, there's many of them just running.
Thank you. Sheila Baker, followed by Nancy Moss.
Hello, and thank you for being here. Electric bikes for Bike Share. I asked Bike Petaluma what they would like said at this goal-setting meeting, and Amber Siblosloy answered. She said, "I can't be there, I'm in training all day, but I would like to point out that the city has submitted items to SCTA as part of their proposed future budget, and the bike lane piece looks to be all Class II lanes." Definitely worthy of a comment if someone is up for it, something like, "We're here to say the community wants safer bike lanes, and we're concerned that the city is continuing to direct funding to Class II and Class III shareos." Lanes, when we know that they are not safe and they don't support enough type of riders to change a status quo, we have a lot of pressure from traffic these days, it's getting worse. And so what I think she's talking about, and I know what I'm talking about, is buffered, separated lanes so that people can be safe when they're riding. Thank you.
Thank you. I see that Nancy Moss wants to speak on the next item. Do you want to wait on that?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Okay. Janice Kater Thompson, followed by Brian Barnicle.
This is my last public comment. Coco has her first dog training. And so, you know, we as a city adopted a climate change commission, and today's development votes help support climate change. I want to go back to the Rainier and the interchange that is being proposed. Without an EIR, you have to know how much it's going to affect flooding in the floodplain. So it's irresponsible not to have segregated the EIRs from crosstown connector to an interchange, and that needs to be done. And I also want to talk about truck routes really quick. The post office has over 200 truckloads per day, and they work 24/7. And most of them get off at Washington Street, they're 73 feet long, and they go up to McDowell to the Corona Station. Federal Express, same thing. I talked to Lagunitas in the past, and they now use Old Ridgewood Highway instead of giving off at Washington Street, because all of that, that's pollution. There's a lot of people that live off Washington Street, and truck routes are important. Thank you.
Brian Barnicle, followed by Ben Peters.
Rapid fire. Natural gas is the fastest source of growing of pollution globally and is the leading cause of premature deaths. That's news. Number fifty-two, we should be fully focused on decarbonizing if we're serious about leadership. I just submitted a proposal yesterday where police force was electrifying their entire fleet. I'm suggesting we add goals to declare a zero fossil fuel purchase policy, add new construction gas ban, add sustainable land use goals, incorporate sea level rise in our EIRs, walkability as well, goals for that. And in general, you suggested that we're going to have to go higher density, and you're putting single-family homes next to our train station. That's incredibly, incredibly short-sighted. We're going to have to go significantly higher density, or we're going to have to go out and eat up our beautiful farms and open spaces on the edge of community. And we just heard that he's suggesting that we might be doing that instead of going higher density at our train stations. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ben Peters, and that's it.
So, if you guys read the ARIAS, I have a well-stated position on our city needs to do better leadership in regards to our renewables procurement policies. So, the city is choosing not to issue a bid, choosing to use a statewide bid from Sacramento for a local construction project. So who here in this room thinks we're going to get the best pricing out of Sacramento? And who here thinks we shouldn't have battery backup at our critical facilities? So that item forty-nine, solar panel, I look forward to that because that's an above-market-rate purchase price contract that really shouldn't be executed. And the other thing, on the technology, the technology is not ready. You may have heard that from someone up there. We have to have leadership, okay? What isn't ready is our decision-making ability. When you have a lifecycle cost accounting of these technologies, the purchase price becomes much less relevant than the actual ongoing lifecycle cost. So you have, on the one hand, electric buses, and the other hand, this technology's not ready. So we need consistent messaging from our leadership.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we are on to goal three, a safe community that thrives.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and my council members, community members. Chief Kat Savano, honored to serve as your police chief. With me today will be Fire Chief Lynn Thompson. We will do our best to perform like synchronized swimmers from two opposite ends of the table. A safe community that thrives. I'd just like to say also before we start, there's been a lot of great energy in the room, and I appreciate the leadership from the community about positively influencing the goal-setting. So thank you very much for that. We have three objectives that we're covering in our presentation. To maintain and enhance public safety and prepare for emergencies and disasters, pretty straightforward for the fire chief and I. Create diverse housing opportunities for all Petalumans. This is obviously very critical. Our staff, in both police and fire, struggle with new developments coming online, but we realize the city has to move forward, and housing is a huge issue. And then finally, support a healthy community by encouraging active listening and encouraging recreational activities. Obviously, when people have things to do, they don't come into contact with us as much, so we embrace those as well. There are twenty-nine work plan items, and we're going to cover some of those highlights right now. On number seventy-four, evaluate city facilities. We've heard some conversation about that already. We've nearly completed the facilities assessment of not only parks and recreation vehicles, or sorry, buildings, but City Hall, the courtyard, police and fire stations, and other facilities with a final report expected this spring. We've also completed our first-ever transit asset management plan for transit facilities as part of a regional effort toward long-term facility improvements. I know we're not supposed to clap, but that's a great accomplishment. And I'll turn it over to Fire Chief.
Thanks. I'm doing the backstroke from that. So number seventy-seven states that it's to assist the community with special focus on the special needs of our residents through outreach and training to ensure resiliency and emergency preparedness. Plan for natural disasters and all emergencies, providing safe places for the community to shelter. An example being the community center fairgrounds, churches, and facilities. As you probably have already realized, that the police chief and I are constantly evaluating the potential for safety challenges as we move forward. In the summer of 2019, the city developed a continuity of operations plan, which the City Emergency Operations Center action plans were developed in preparation for PG&E's Public Safety Power Shut-Off. And that program impacted all of Sonoma County. EOC participated in an annual EOC refresher training in anticipation of that, and specifically our response and mitigation to the impacts that were going to come out of our power being shut off. The city was impacted with our water, our sewer, our public safety, and other essential services that we were able to maintain. Additionally, several thousand evacuees from out north were sheltered in Petaluma during the concave evacuations. The city conducted community outreach and education, which included presentations by PG&E and its potential impacts. These presentations were given to the community through focus groups to our senior population, our business population, and city council. Presentations were also made to the Community Valley Hospital senior staff, and we worked with Sonoma County Healthcare Coalition to ensure the access and functional needs community would be educated and notified potential and active events throughout their networks. City staff developed informational flyers for the public, and the AFN community and businesses received those. We also shared PG&E material and messaging in social media and public alerts. Phone contact was made, and informational letters were sent out to the vulnerable populations and those that care for them, including all skilled nursing facilities, healthcare facilities, hospitals, and mobile park homes. The city created a new webpage specifically for PSPS outreach and education. The city's EOC activation during all PSPS events that affected the city provided education in those areas. It was also activated throughout the sheltering of central and north county evacuees. The fire department and the police department upstaffed during the concave fire and during red flag emergencies. Over 20 Petaluma firefighters assisted the concave fire suppression support. Transit participated in the Bay Area Period Transit Accessibility Committee as part of the Bay Area's UASI 2019 Critical Transportation Project with other regional transit agencies to improve transit operations during emergencies. Back to you, Kat.
Thank you, chief. On number eighty, obviously, traffic is a huge impact on our community and something that we're focused on. On September ninth of 2019, we adopted Council Resolution 2019-219 to reestablish our full-time traffic engineer, a resource that we desperately needed. That position has been filled through an in-house promotional process. We are still evaluating the need for additional street crews and staff as well as management for that piece of our infrastructure.
Number ninety-nine included secure designation as an age-friendly city. On Monday, December sixteenth, 2019, city council approved a resolution authorizing the application to participate in the World Health Organization's Global Network of Age-Friendly Cities and Communities. Recreation staff has submitted the membership application resolution and a letter of intent to the designated age-friendly representative. We expect to receive a word of final acceptance by March 2020.
And the next slide, just highlighting some photos and accomplishments. I wanted to touch on a few things. One of the things was leveraging technology, and I want to just by a show of hands, if you've been to the web city's new website, or you have subscribed to NICSOL, which you can do by texting AAA777 with your zip code, and you will automatically be subscribed to not only the police department profile, the fire department profile, but also the city's profile, so that we can stay engaged with you. How many people are connected to us that are in the room today? All right. Thank you very much. If you haven't, and you have a smartphone, please just text AAA777 with your zip code, either 94952, 54, or one of the post offices, and you will be automatically subscribed to those three services, so that any messaging that comes out from the city, we can keep you informed. From the fire chief and I, it's obvious that an engaged and informed community is a safer community, but a lot of initiatives like goal-setting, fiscal sustainability, it's a way for us to stay engaged with you and us leveraging technology to help us do that. And finally, well, we'll just move into the next slide. Thank you. Fire chief, back to you.
Number seventy-five, create an emergency operations center that is appropriately equipped and staffed to better respond to all emergencies and disaster. And if you're familiar with our current EOC, it's in the police station, and it really is inadequate to provide the kind of service the city needs. So we are looking at changing that problem that we have. So we've initiated EOC and AV improvements for that existing facilities. Like I said, we do need to improve it tremendously for us to be effective as we move into major emergencies coming in the possible future. We are currently in contact with consultants to provide recommendations for further enhancements to operate a more efficient, effective EOC. We anticipate that the evaluation and recommendations will be completed this spring. We're evaluating them right now, and we're looking forward to their evaluation and providing us some information on how we can move forward in this arena.
And next, number seventy-six, with the PSPS events and sadly, the fires that came with that, we, city staff became basically experts in care and shelter operations by being thrown right into that. Staff did a fantastic job, but we have also, from that, established relationships with Sonoma County Care and Shelter Council. Staff's been attending those meetings monthly to review and discuss and adopt best practices for responding to regional natural disasters and large-scale evacuations. We are working on the Care and Shelter Operations Manual as it supplements our emergency operations, and we continue to revise and refine that plan to better aid us in our preparedness for care and shelter in emergency operations.
And number eighty-three is consider a firework and use sales ban or other modifications to current ordinance. Assist the nonprofits who rely on these sales to identify alternatives for fundraising. Staff is currently developing a draft ordinance for a council consideration that would be presented at council in late, excuse me, in early March, and that would propose a fireworks ban and a plan. That's a fireworks ban and what we call a social host ordinance. Staff is developing a notification plan and program for nonprofits that will currently sell fireworks as part of their fundraising efforts. Our goal is to arrest the potential of the safety issue around fireworks and as well as helping our fundraising efforts for the nonprofits in the community.
Thank you, chief. Number eighty-eight, facilitate construction of accessory dwelling units. SB two grant application has been submitted to the state for funding for permit-ready accessory dwelling units. Code was adopted to comply with recent state legislation, and a new impact fee structure has been created for ADUs adopted by the city council on January sixth of this year, which includes exemption from all impact fees for ADUs under 750 square feet. I know we can't apply, but that's a huge accomplishment as well. Chief?
I'm going to combine item eighty-nine and ninety. It has to do with housing. Staff intend to return to the council for direction regarding whether the city council wants the staff to research and present to council consideration for potential approaches for housing commission creation and role and powers of housing commissions. An initial housing workshop with the city council held on July 29th, 2019, to begin discussions regarding essential, affordable, and diverse local housing options. Preparing for follow-up housing workshop in spring of 2020, discussion regarding essential, affordable, and diverse local housing options. Preparing for the following, the follow-up housing workshop in 2020.
And on to the not-yet-initiated slide. Number seventy-three, restore public safety specialty units when possible. And this, unfortunately, while I wish to report some progress here, has been tough for both the fire chief and I, and we thank you for being engaged in the fiscal sustainability process. Due to a lack of funding, which has been our Achilles' heel, to restore lost peace officer positions eliminated in prior fiscal years, or the ability to add new firefighter positions, we have not been able to restore specialized services. Those services, while there are a few listed in this priority sheet, we will be making recommendations to amend a few of those to encompass really what we've lost and what we're trying to restore, like DUI enforcement, our homeless outreach, mental health services, bicycle patrol for both police and fire, narcotics enforcement, property crimes enforcement, and community engagement and community policing initiatives, along with bicycle medics for large-scale public events. And then finally, on to ninety-two. And then finally, on to 92, and we switched here, folks, so we moved a couple into a different slide that didn't make the edits. Number 92, which is up above, work with the county to adopt a tobacco retail license ordinance. And I'm happy to say that staff in the Police Department as well as economic development and open government began having meetings and collaborating with our regional partners who have already passed an ordinance such as this to begin the groundwork for bringing this to council, we hope, in the spring of this year. So we're very close to that. And then back down to the last slide, Assistant City Manager Cochran, thank you. Number 96, which is improve access and healthy, sustainable food, to healthy and sustainable food through the community. While we can all agree this is an important initiative, along with many others in this plan and our goals, there are currently no resources available to dedicate to this effort at this time. And with that, we turn it back to you.
Thank you. We're going to start with Councilmember Kearney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's, we can go to the EOC discussion. So currently, our EOC, our Emergency Operations Center, is located in the briefing room and break room for the Police Department. The Police Department is already a crowded and cramped area on a regular day, and then throw an emergency operations center into the daily operations for our Police Department, in my opinion, creates some issue. We have a whole wing at City Hall with a pretty large area dedicated to a courtroom that I don't know if staff can count how many times in the past 10 years the actual case was heard in that courtroom. I know that one time I had the distinct honor of being on a jury, I served in that courtroom, but that was in 2000. And so, you know, looking at whether or not we can work with the county court system to either actually use it or maybe turn it into a room that can be used for staff training and then convert it to an EOC when we have a disaster is just a thought. I think one of our top priorities has to be restoring public safety units, not only our Police Department, but looking at staffing and how we maintain the staffing in the Fire Department. One of the issues that comes up is being able to find housing. When we have recruits that might come to us from outside the area, finding affordable housing is difficult. We have 74 vacant units at the Marina, at the Sonoma State Housing Complex, I don't know what they call it, but maybe looking at entering into an agreement with Sonoma State to allow for some of our city staff to rent those units would be advantageous. Goal number 79, improve traffic safety through proactive education, engineering, and enforcement strategies. In the early 2000s, the state senator from San Francisco passed legislation to create a safety corridor on 19th Avenue by Stonestown and San Francisco State University, and that creates a double fine zone, so if you're traveling through there and you're speeding, they can give you a ticket that has a little bit more teeth to it. I would propose that as part of this, goal number 79, that we work with Caltrans and our regional transportation partners to create a safety corridor from 101 on Lakeville to Highway 37 throughout that 116 stretch. The amount of accidents that we've seen is really astounding, and they're not accidents where it's just a small fender bender, these are serious injury accidents. And yes, some of it is outside of our city limits, but we should be the leader in the South County in making sure that we can move forward and protect our community. Every time there's a vehicle accident on Highway 116, our Fire Department has to respond out there. More often than not, our Fire Department is the first responding entity to arrive on scene, even though there is a volunteer Fire Department out there. And so it is a train on our city of pedal model resources to be able to respond out there, and it's something that, you know, we should do everything we can to give our staff the tools to do what they need to prevent accidents out there. The goal addressing our facilities, and I'm going to scroll through back to where that was at. Goal number 74, evaluate all city facilities. Our police and fire stations are woefully under, they're inadequate for the needs of our current community. Our firefighters are staying in facilities that have had significant mold and water damage because of aging infrastructure and pipes that have failed, and, you know, there is a huge risk for our Fire Department personnel when they go respond to these calls, are exposed to chemicals that are burning from all the fire retardant material that is used in construction of homes and in furniture, and they bring that back to their living environment. And so being able to reduce the risk at the living environment for the Fire Department is important. Our Police Department, we have staff that their lockers and their equipment are stored outside because our locker room facilities for the police officers is inadequate, and so, you know, we do need to look at upgrading those facilities. I think the newest of our facilities in public safety is over 40 years old, and so it should be a top priority. We don't have a lot of funding to address it, but it should be a top priority. It's one thing that we don't pay our staff a competitive wage with some of our partner agencies in the community, but then to have them show up to facilities that are inadequate and equipment that's inadequate is a double whammy and is an insult to injury. And I'll stop at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McDonald.
Well, first, I absolutely want to reiterate Councilman Kearney's points that those are key, key issues we need to get to the top of our priorities. But this category has quite a width of things, and so first with the positives. I really want to appreciate the Police Department for their outreach efforts, getting in the community, their Coffee with Cops programs is fabulous connection with community. I think that's what we're looking for from the city is connection with community. And similarly, with the Fire Department and the COE program that they get out and have trainings for citizen emergency response in your neighborhoods, I think those are essential that each of us getting on that. So that's great. Knocking down to goals 89, 90, as we talked about, I think we're failing miserably and need to really get after our housing policies. The fact that we build 200% of the goals in market rate housing, but only 5% in the very low-income housing, means we haven't addressed what's really going on. And granted, we're operating within a set of rules, it's time for us to figure out how to come up with new rules and a new game because it's not working the way it is. And so hopefully, we can address that. Also, the stories coming out of the apartments that we do get, units we do get in apartments that are affordable, not all the stories about how you get into that if you're a person of need are good stories. We need to get after having better coordination with those property owners so that persons of very low income or low-income bans of qualification bans get the access they need without the hassle that comes with it.
Dave King is next. Councilmember King.
Thank you. You know, we just heard from both our police and fire chiefs, and I guess my comment would be that we have, I believe, excellent departments in both ends. Sometimes you don't know what you've got to let go, as the phrase goes, and we are slowly losing our ability to pay for these services in the city. So as we go forward, I would like all of you who are involved in our community in this, everybody in the room, to be aware of that because sometimes we forget when things are going well and to bring things up that are not going well. When things are going well, sometimes they go away and we regret that we let that happen. That's a financial issue primarily, and Councilmember Kearney addressed some of it, but it is something important to consider. And just, I received an email in preparation for this from former Councilmember Albertson, who some of you may remember was on our city council for eight years, but was also a Fire Chief for many years, to remind me to mention, and I had it on my list to mention anyway, but it was a good reminder about the condition of, among others, the downtown fire station and our need to replace it, which has been a need for a very, very long time. So I'd like to thank both chiefs for their presentation, and that's just a comment I want to make to the public, and I hope when you're out speaking to people, that's something you speak to them about. This is not some small problem that we have, this is a major problem going forward.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I want to give Chief Soriano the opportunity to address Savano, sorry. Number 78, I think it's time for a break.
Lunch is next.
So improve public safety through proactive crime prevention activities. You don't have anything listed here as what you're doing, but I'm sure you are, and so I wonder if you could tell us what, enlighten what those are.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Fisher. We do continue our community outreach and education efforts, obviously, trying to prevent crime is an effective strategy rather than just reacting to it. We've unfortunately had to scale that back in terms of our community outreach and those presentations. Certain programs like having officers at schools, having additional civilian staff like community service officers that would do a lot of those presentations, those are reductions that we have not recovered from. You'll recall, or maybe you won't, we used to engage twice annually, regional town hall meetings throughout the city. We've had to scale those back because of our staffing challenges. We've tried to be more strategic and move throughout the city with efforts like Coffee with a Cop, trying to, you know, bring us and our staff to the neighborhoods so that we can engage. Our volunteer force headed by our community engagement liaison, Jennifer Pritchard, has been really relying heavily on more than 75 volunteers to do a lot of different community presentations to our aging population to help them not become victims of crime, as well as other scam and fraud presentations. So it is happening, it's not as robust as we would like, nor is it where at the level that the city deserves, but it is a focus for us, and I appreciate you asking about it.
Is that it? Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Two things. First of all, I wanted to underscore Councilmember King's comments on the city's financial resources. There are a lot of things on this list that we would love to be able to tackle, and to a large degree, we don't have the financial resources. This is not a new situation. I remember former city manager Stouders' oft-repeated observation was doing less with less. So this is kind of a situation that we've kind of gotten used to, and just imagine how great this community could be if we did have financial resources to actually tackle more of these issues. And then the second point I wanted to make, this is item number 83, consider a firework and use sales ban. And then to me, the key phrase here that I wanted to emphasize is, or other modification to current ordinance. And I really hope that when staff comes forward, you give the council options, and in particular, the option that I'd like to see on the table is modifying the current situation, which is four, I believe, four days of sales and one day of use, to look at weather condition, weather forecasts that are current at the time and only ban the use that particular year if there are, there'd be severe weather conditions. In the forecast, the last several years, 4th of July has been cool and not very windy and not particularly dangerous. The new normal fire season is really centered more around the Santa Ana winds, beginning around the month of October. So I'm not sure that the complete ban is going to be justified, so I just wanted to put that on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. On this item of a safe community that thrives, I just wanted to bring up the whole issue of emergency response coordination. And at the recent mayors and council members meeting, the mayors' meeting section of that was discussing the possibility of the cities working together with the county, perhaps in the form of a JPA, to coordinate and develop emergency response coordination because this has not happened to the extent that is really necessary to make sure that people are protected. The response was better during the Kincaid Fire than it was during the Tubbs Fire, but the situation was very different. The Kincaid Fire had days, we had days of notice that that was coming, and it didn't, there weren't a lot of large fires in other areas that pulled away support services. So it's not quite the same as the Tubbs Fire was, but should there be another Tubbs-type fire or something of that, like a huge deluge or an earthquake, we don't really have a coordinated effort throughout the county so that we're all on the same page, and that really is something that I'd like to see us work on with the other cities in the county. The emergency operating EOC being inadequate, that's absolutely correct, and I think it's actually a good suggestion by Councilmember Kearney, that we really do need to have an adequate place for when this happens, and it, you know, it's one of those things that you don't need it very often, but when you need it, you absolutely need it to be working and working correctly. So that's something that I hope we can have the resources to support our first responders on. So with that, we are finished, we're going to go to, finish with council comment, we're going to go to the public comment on this item, and then we're going to lunch. So thank you for helping us keep on schedule today. There's been a lot covered, so, and I also want to say before we go to lunch, because I might lose control of that, I really want to remind people to please sign the banner in the back of support and thank you to Congressman Huffman for his getting our river dredged. So first, I have Nancy Moss, and she will be followed by Mark Howell.
Do I have this at the right place? Yes, sorry. Okay, first, I want to just thank the city for this amazing opportunity to hear about the goals, the status, and also to hear input from the public here. And my subject on item 84 concerns paving. We all recognize that we have increased traffic in the city, and I think we all appreciate the sorry condition of our streets, specifically North McDowell. And we do understand their constraints or financial constraints when it comes to paving, but what we have residential projects like the Brody Ranch, which is pretty much, it's not all occupied, but it's pretty much complete, and we have proposed developments like the one in Corona. It's just bewildering to me that improvements to North McDowell are not scheduled until 2022. Thank you.
Mark Howell, followed by Chris Riddelow.
My name is Mark Howell, I represent Localli Opera Club. We are a nonprofit, and a fireworks ban would cripple us as far as fundraising and for our daily operations. Safe and sane fireworks, as far as I know, are safe and sane. If you eliminate them, you're going to probably get an increase in illegals. I mean, that's the reality of it all. I mean, I grew up, you know, 4th of July was fireworks time, hot dogs, hamburgers out in the street. out in the street, having a lot of fun. You take that away from the people, and what are they going to do? They're going to go with elsewhere or do other kinds. And so, a ban to me is really not a good thing. I mean, the United States, we, it's 4th of July, I mean, we go bang, bang, and have fun. So, taking that away and then taking away the monies for nonprofits just does not seem possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Ruggelow, followed by Pam Granger.
So, I'm pleased to provide an update to age-friendly. The city of Petaluma has actually joined the network of age-friendly cities, which means that we're not an age-friendly city, yet we're committed to becoming an age-friendly city. So, I just want to make that clear. I want to thank the staff at the recto department for helping us get that application in and pushing it through. I also want to thank the city. So, many of your goals are already age-friendly. I feel like we're well on our way. The senior advisory committee is ready to help you as far as making things happen. Talk about disaster preparedness. That is so much part of age-friendly. I went to one meeting last year that was about the code project, and I actually thought that it missed an opportunity to really emphasize that everything with emergency preparedness, you need to think about your neighborhood, you need to think about people. And one final thing, this is not age-friendly, but there's a move to replace the word accident with the word crash, because accidents make it sound like it was unavoidable, and crashes are much more modest, and sort of wake people up to go, oh, my gosh, maybe we can do something about this.
Thank you. Pam Granger, followed by Barry Buzzowitz.
Good morning. I'm speaking on behalf of a number of organizations with a grateful, enthusiastic thank you on item 92, which is working with the county to adopt a tobacco-retail license. This is an item with an incredible sense of urgency. We're working together to take action which will greatly reduce the number of youth nicotine use and addiction. In delivering this thank you, I'm wearing a beach blanket Babylon hat, which includes being the co-chair of Tobacco-Free Sonoma County, being a member of the Petaluma Healthcare District Heart Health Work Group, being a volunteer for the American Lung Association and the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network, and probably most importantly, as a resident and grandparent of two, four, six, and eight-year-olds. So, thank you so much for this forward momentum. We appreciate it.
Barry Buzzowitz, followed by Pat Fulmer.
Thank you again, Barry Buzzowitz. I'm in, this is on Objective One, item 82. I'm a member of the Petaluma Day Labor Initiative, and as many of you know, or all of you know, day laborers are an essential part of our economic community, and many of our local day laborers are long-term residents of Petaluma. They're also vulnerable. PELI is very grateful to Chief Savano and our police and to the city for working to ensure the safety and respect for the workers, and the close communication that you have maintained with Elise Hempel, who acts as our intermediary. And we look forward to continuing this support and good work, and thank you, Chief Savano, for the coffee at Petaluma Coffee Company on Thursday morning.
Pat Fulmer, followed by Jerry Wilkinson.
So, for safety for North McDowell Boulevard is a big problem. Last week, we had North McDowell Boulevard and Corona Roads closed, north and south. So, we wake up in the morning to go somewhere, and we are blocked. We can't go anywhere. There's no signage, there's just bright lights, and the people getting out of our park had to make a U-turn and try to figure out how they're going to get to work. Most of them ended up going down to Washington Street and getting on the freeway just to go over where the car, what is that, transportway or whatever. So, usually, they'd get a five-minute ride to work. Now, they had to go all the way around and get in traffic on the freeway. There was no signage, except by the hospital saying there's going to be a road closed. The hospital is about a mile south of where we live, and there was no flagman, there was nothing telling us what's going on. We don't even know who is responsible for the construction going on. We called the non-emergency police department, and they told us we needed to call some other number who usually is supposed to put up signs. I don't think I should have to do that. I think that this should be planned out ahead of time, and residents should know the road is closed, find alternatives for whatever's going on.
Thank you. Jerry Wilkinson, followed by Jennifer Benedetti.
Hello, thank you. First of all, I've got a question in regard to the police department going down, or fire department going down 116. Is that out of district, and is there a compensation for them going out? I'm just curious about that. Second of all, you had mentioned that the police department is inadequate. It's old, which it is. And I would suggest, rather than considering remodeling the police department and the fire department's own rules, let's think a bit bigger. We have a fairground right here, which is under consideration right now as to what we are going to do with it in the future. Why not centralize these facilities, police department in the center of Petaluma at the fairgrounds? City Hall would be a good location here also. There would be room to build the emergency center that you're talking about. I think the centralization of our services would serve the community much better, and I think it's important that we think larger than just what we can do with one little piece here, one little piece there.
Thank you.
We need to think a big picture.
Thank you. We're down to one minute. Okay. Jennifer Benedetti, followed by Ben Peters.
Hi there. I wanted to speak to item number 76, only because I was here, actually, very physically here at the fairgrounds during both the Tubbs fires and the Kincaid fires. I showed up on day number one to see if I could help out in any way, and immediately noticed that there were hundreds about or so, give or take some toddlers to teenagers, just kind of running around like Lord of the Flies. And I immediately contacted a few other parents, and we showed up, and within 48 hours, we had created a childcare center here on the fairgrounds. And it was, it included, we recruited translators, because there were no translators available for these children and their families. We recruited certified childcare workers, because it's really, really important for children to be cared for and watched by people that are certified and that we trust to work with these children. We recruited mental health professionals, counselors, because it wasn't just for their physical safety that I worried, but also for their, that they be trauma-informed people working with these kids. And I just really, really hope that in the manual that is being created, that the most vulnerable portion of our population is considered when it comes to creating. And I'd be happy, being as I did both in the Tubbs fires and the Kincaid fires, I'd be happy to offer what I learned from those experiences.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ben Peters, followed by David Keller.
So, we got a somber picture on our budget crisis, but the good news is, we actually have the budget to hire our public safety officers. The problem is, they can't afford to live here, and, you know, item 90 here is a five-year plan. So, I have a one-day plan. It's called "Reject Corona Station, Work With the Sonoma County Housing Land Trust To Have Dedicated Public Safety Units For Corona Station Affordable And Downtown." That's a one-day plan. Let's reject this nonsense tomorrow. Let's bring the affordable housing developer back to the table. Let's work with the Sonoma County Housing Land Trust to actually get our public safety officer positions filled. It's not that difficult, but I wait for the public records to come out, because we have people on our city council negotiating secretly behind our back, telling the developer not to work with affordable housing and to approve single-family housing, and that's unacceptable.
Thank you. David Keller, followed by no one. Okay, that's it. But still, you're still limited to a minute.
I'm trying to get no one's time. I want to thank the folks who've shown up. This is, once again, an incredible heart Petaluma, and this activity and this action is really important. On resiliency strategies, that means, that's number 81, avoiding predictable disasters. You know we are a city that floods. You know that you have climate change. You know that you have more severe storms, and we need to prevent death, injury, property losses, the economic hit to the city all around. By looking forwardly, FEMA maps, the flood maps, are out of date the moment they are published, because they are retrospective. They only map what's on the ground at the time that they do their engineering. We need to be looking prospectively at what impacts we're going to have, and that means preventing new development with a housing lifespan of at least 100 years, if reasonably maintained. We need to keep development out of a prospective floodplain, and that will help our city a great deal. We need a Central River Park.
That's it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got one. Late stridler here, Ryan Barnacle.
Yep. I'm just going to continue to beat down on the same points, because we're here to talk about priorities, and I think talking about sea level rise, I'm just going to keep going with Rifinoff, what David said. We definitely need to be talking about land conservation. We need to talk about our land use practices, walkability. I think we, age-friendly cities is a great idea. I think we need to turn the action there, or become an age-friendly city. Walkable cities have higher property taxes, and, you know, there's just a mess of good reasons why we should be focusing on public safety, safe streets. Safe streets include no pot holes. Safe streets include Class 1 bike lanes. Safe streets include contiguous sidewalks. And I just don't see that as our priority right now, and I think it should be. And I think we should, I agree with what Ben said, that, you know, if we want to do something about housing, and we want to do something for our community, we definitely need to be rejecting Corona on Monday and forcing a way better project that is forward-looking. It's just really short-sighted to be building low-nancy housing at a time when the community is about to have a lot more housing requirements placed on it. Thank you.
And that is the last word. So now, we're going to take a break for lunch. Are there any orders on that, or I haven't been given the actual sequence of events?
So, we have lunch, and it will be served there in the breezeway buffet-style. So, I don't know where Suzie is, but if you give a hand wave, Suze or somebody, it's there in the breezeway, and we'll take about a half an hour. Yes, thank you, Patrick.
Not Suzie, but Patrick.
So, if we could be back here by noon, so we can finish up the other two goals, that'd be great. Thank you.
And this is, goal number four is "An Economy That Prosperes," and that's Ingrid Almeri.
Oh, sorry. Good afternoon. Thank you again for staying and being available. The topic we're covering, the goal, is "An Economy That Prosperes." So, the first item we want to highlight is the council directed us, and we completed a city minimum wage ordinance. So, the city's minimum wage is now $14 for small companies and $15 for large companies as of January 1st. And we also kicked off Fair Wage February, which was a program to support businesses through the transition and promote shopping and dining locally.
Good afternoon. Heather Hines, Planning Manager. I'm going to tag team with Ingrid on some of these. So, the other one that's up is 113, "Facilitate The Development Of Additional Hotels Where Appropriate." There's been a couple of things that staff has done to further this one. One thing is, we took a modification to the city's resolution for fiscal and economic impact assessments for hotels, to remove hotels. One of the things we were finding is each time we were taking hotels forward with that analysis, that assessment, it was finding a positive fiscal impact. So, in an effort to facilitate additional hotel development, the council approved a change to that resolution that no longer requires that analysis for hotel projects. We have one hotel project under construction, that's the Courtyard Marriott at Riverfront. You'll see that from Highway 101. That went up quite quickly, because it was done all as modular pieces that came and got stacked up together, and now the siding is going on around it. The other hotel project is Home to Suites. That is an approved project, not yet under construction, and that's at the Redwood Gateway Center. Oh, and I'm moving on to the next, this is a graphic on some of the efforts that have come out, Eat and Shop Local, the Business Toolkit, and then the Downtown Turning Basin. Moving to some of the highlights, 101, "Create and Promote Business-Friendly City Operations." So, there's a number of things that have been done here as well. We do have Open Counter, which is a tool, online tool, for property owners, businesses looking for spaces to put in certain information, and it can allow you to see what maybe is allowed on a certain parcel, or if, let's say, you're wanting to open a certain kind of business, you can put it in, and it'll show you different areas of the city where that use would be appropriate. Also, tries to ask a lot of the questions so that businesses, especially smaller businesses that are coming into town, are thinking of the right questions to ask where they can get those resources. Another thing we've recently started is expanded counter hours at the building and planning department that includes our fire marshal. So, she is there on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings, so that people can come in, get their questions from multiple different departments answered, right there over the counter at the same time. The Business Toolkit is another one, and then also, we recently applied for funding through SB 2 grant funding, and actually, we just heard this week that our application has been approved, and it's now working through the contract phase of that. And one of the things we requested money for was to do some updates to the west wing of City Hall, to make it a more friendly place for people to come in, find what they need to find, interact with the people they need to interact with, be able to have all the staff in one place to do that. So then, 109 is about the airport rezoning. I'm running for my microphone. So, we have done a draft update to the airport zoning document that has gone through staff. It has gone through the Airport Commission and received a positive recommendation for the Airport Commission. It has now been submitted to the Federal Aviation Administration for their review before it goes through the rest of the approval process to Planning Commission and City Council. So, that is in progress. Okay, now it's my turn. Number 114 was "Identify Potential Parking And Transportation Alternatives For Downtown." I think the biggest piece of best news for this is the Bike Share Program that will be primarily located at the Smart Station and provide transportation to and from the Smart Station downtown. Number 17, "Identify Short And Long-Term Funding Solutions For Dredging At The Turning Basin And Federal Channel." I think we've all heard the good news. We're grateful. I think the thing that we're going to be most focused on is the work that we need to do to prepare for the dredging, completing any permits, and any work on our end that we'll need to do to support that effort. And then I think, looking forward, we've already been engaged, and we will continue to be engaged at looking at long-term solutions for the dredging. We know this is a one-time fix, and we want to make sure that we have a inter-jurisdictional program set aside so that we can have a long-term solution in the future. Looking at work plan item 120 with a focus on river-oriented development, including Golden Eagle and Water Street. Water Street is in process, Water Street North. So, there is a benefit assessment district that has been initiated, and that will come back to the city council for the ballots in March. And if that gets approved, then we anticipate construction on Water Street North. And if that gets approved, then we anticipate construction on Water Street North to initiate this summer. And part of that Water Street North is it will run from Washington to Oak Street and then an extension of Oak Street. It also includes bike-ped connection to the pedestrian bridge and the Lynch Creek Trail. So that'll be a nice additional segment along there for bike and ped. We are also looking at a lot of the segments along the river as development comes in along the river, particularly Riverfront. There is a river park with access and path. We have a preliminary application, actually a formal application in now on the next, what people often think of as the Pomeroy site next to Riverfront. So we're also looking at then extending that river path and that open space, the pedestrian access, the public access to the river, continuing to work with the Small Craft Coalition on the float house and the Turning Basin. So making sure as projects come in along those rivers, that the river enhancement plan and general plan and the focus of the river, that we see those segments come into play. So eventually we'll have that full connection. Next slide. So moving on to the items we have not yet initiated, it's been a goal to update the city's economic development strategy. And we have simply prioritized some of the other important efforts, the outreach efforts and fairgrounds efforts. And we continue to work on our economic development strategy that we have in place and is still supporting our efforts. And we look forward to expanding that vision in the future.
Who would like to go first? Go ahead.
I wanted to jump in on 114, which is identify potential parking and transportation alternatives for downtown. We talked about the bike share here, but again, and I mentioned this earlier about street closures and that kind of thing and looking at our downtown and are there opportunities to, for instance, have one-way streets or metered parking and, you know, taking sort of this more holistic look at our transportation in terms of, you know, charging people to ride a bus but not charging people to park a car? And if we can, if we can sort of look at the balance of that. And, you know, when the police chief brought before us the issue of our meter vehicles and, you know, that they're actually not looking at meters, but they're actually just flagging tires, that was really a revelation. It was like, oh, yes, we have people that are around our downtown, you know, looking at how people are parked, but we don't have any meters downtown. So it's kind of a disconnect. And so I think that was the only thing I had on this. So I'll stop.
Kevin, yes.
So much potential for good in this, the whole Water Street discussion about building out the Water Street and getting the housing that we need in that area. But building that street out, I want to commend Public Works and the city engineer for their effort of reaching out to Smart and making a connection of bike path to come off of Water Street up to what Smart built at Payran and making that connection. Because I think that's a great mobility and economic linkage that needs to happen and staff's chasing. So good job, staff.
Councilmember King.
Just a comment on the dredging going forward. I think we're all fairly certain that that's going to be a local rather than a federally-funded priority going forward. So, yeah, so I would like to see us sometime before probably the end of this year or early 2021, perhaps have a workshop on our options. We've had a lot of discussion over at least the years I've been on council about alternative options and regional solutions and things of that nature. But I'd like to see us as a council and as a community, see what our true options are. We never want to have to go 17 more years before dredge. And I know we're financially limited. I may have pointed that out already a couple times tonight, today. But I think that the earlier we get on to this for the next dredge, the better.
Thank you. Yes, I will just follow up on the whole question of the dredge. You know, being very excited that we're actually going to have this is one thing, but we now have to look forward. And we do have to look at our partners and we have to see what options are available. And I agree with Councilmember King that sooner is better than later on this because it's going to take time to get, start putting that money aside and building those connections. And so I really agree that we need to get on that. Something I wanted to, nothing was brought up about cannabis. And I did remember that in the last section, we had several people from, well, actually a couple of people from the public talking about tobacco retail license. I think that we need to look at the CBD shops that seem to have sprung up all over town within the loophole that they don't sell marijuana, they sell CBD products, and that ostensibly they don't contain THC, although I have heard, you know, anecdotal stories that they do sell some THC products. But I know that they sell, you know, vaping products and some tobacco products. So I really do think we need to look at that under both goal number three and goal number four. In that if we are going to have cannabis stores here, we should look at that as a source of revenue. And I think that we need to deal with these other kind of blighting pop-up stores that I don't think are doing any good for our downtown or any of the other areas that they exist in. So the other issue that, there's two other issues. I didn't really see much dealing with the question of homelessness. And I do think homelessness is a huge economic issue. And our economy really does, is going to be affected by that more and more as that problem, you know, is not going away. And we really have to be creative, thanks to the work done by our staff with engaging the street team, at least on a pilot program. We are being proactive, but we really do need probably to do a lot more. You know, providing housing is one thing, but dealing with the everyday-to-day-ness of the homeless issue is really something that we are all needing to address. And, you know, it seems kind of crass to be doing it under the question of the economy, but, you know, that's where we are right now. And that is something that I do think has a big impact. You know, people don't want to come visit a place that has an out-of-control, a homeless issue. And, you know, the humanity part of it is also very large. The other question, you know, when staff brought up the fact that we have taken hotels out of the mix for the analysis done by the fiscal impact reports because we found that they, all the fiscal impacts were beneficial, it has made me think about the fiscal impacts of the kind of development that we are doing in places that we know we are basically transferring the risk of putting development in those places to the city from the developer or from the person who owns the property at this point. And in some cases, we're putting the near neighbors at risk as well. So I would like the city, I would like us at the council to talk about the idea of looking at some kind of fiscal impact on what is the long-term cost of building, you know, as a project comes forward. So that's something, we had a very robust discussion on fiscal impact reports when we initiated them. And we were able to craft them in a very targeted way that I think has served our community somewhat over the last 15 years. So I'd like us to look at that in the future. So thank you, Steph. And I have one, no, I don't, I have several, one new one. Okay. Nicole Marzo, followed by David McCracken. Do you want to speak at this point?
Yes.
You can take her place. I mean, why not? This is Richard Marzo. Hold on. And so you did not want to speak on economy, special places, so that's the next one. Okay. So followed by Dwayne Bellinger.
Thank you, Rick. Hello? Is he on? Wait. No. Hire! Okay. See, I did that. Thank you, Councilmember Kearney. I can't say that, no, I do believe my wife would cede my time. She's not able to be here. However, first of all, I want to thank all of you. Excuse me. Thank you to all the elected officials, to the city staff. You guys are all amazing. We may not always agree, however, you have my utmost respect. I just simply wanted to come up here as a local businessperson and to impress the importance of our economic prosperity and how together we can help build this city. It's troublesome to hear so often in so many instances today about underfunded, unable to hire, you know, there's so many areas and our city coffers aren't getting any richer. And so I really would like to see the city and local businesses continue to work together. And Ingrid and her department do a great job. I just, I would impress that we all can work together and better and stronger to help our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I call the next person? Dwayne? Yes. Yes. He said in four. You can talk under this or the next. Do you want special places or the economy?
I was put in for section 140. But, hey, I have a great...
Fine. Okay, thank you.
It's good to see everybody here. Thank you. And it was really good to see the community coming together, talking, talking about some of it, politics, some of it just visiting and talking about life. I halfway feel that a community gathering like that, it was part of what Peter Caltharp had envisioned 30 years ago when he started talking about pedestrian-oriented communities. And the emphasis there is on the word "community." People meeting together, I used to be in the post office, they'd meet at the walkable grocery store, they'd meet at the barber shop, they'd meet at these various, all within walking distance prior to our becoming a car-oriented society. And this community is what I thought we were going to build when we built pedestrian-oriented communities around transit stops, that people would be able to have, they would have open public spaces where they could, where they could meet, where they could actually go back to the old times and do things as a community. And I also thought that that was kind of what was in mind with one of our adjoining government agencies when they said in 2000...
Dwayne, that's your minute. So why don't you submit another one and you can talk into the next section as well to go on.
Thank you.
But it's a minute is the limit each time. Thank you. Diana Barnacle, followed by Marie McCusker. Is Diana here?
Yeah, I'm here, but I wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Marie McCusker, and you're followed by John Campy.
Firstly, I want to thank you for bringing this workshop and for the amazing goal of studies in the last year. It's amazing. It was a round break. So I just wanted to, downtown parking, we used to have a parking committee. I'd like to ask that we revisit that and be cautious in, you know, jumping to pay parking. City Pendleton, Santa Rosa, right now are looking to eradicate possible meters. There's a big outcry. So let's learn from our communities around us and what works and engage our merchants too, because they have to be successful. They bring you sales tax. So let's not push people away. Let's find solutions. I want to say I love the fact that we've got the Downtown Streets team coming to town. Great solution for working in the homeless programs and the COTS expansion. But I'd like to remind you that, you know, affordable housing is not $600,000. It's really about if we're going to hit and really do something about our homeless program, a lot of people are on the verge of homelessness because they can't afford to live here. So we have to place those people into homes and we need to think about affordable housing at every cost. Thank you.
Thank you. John Campy, followed by Brian Barnacle.
Great, thank you. I run a telemedicine company that focuses on mental health and substance abuse. And I heard you bring up cannabis. And I also sit on the, I am the chair of the Alcohol and Other Drug Advisory Board in Contra Costa County. Contra Costa County is considering the first approved cannabis dispensary. I am obviously well aware of the issues that come with that. But that single business will generate $4 million a year in tax revenue for the county. And if we're going to have this in and around our city, we might as well collect the taxes in our city. So my only comment is, is to consider it if it's going to be here as an economic opportunity.
Thank you. That's Brian Barnacle who's next, and that's my last card.
On supporting local businesses, I think one thing that the city can do and as well within their parameters is adopting local purchasing preferences for businesses that are local. We all know that when we spend money on local businesses, it stays in our local community. Second, I'm just going to go back to Corona and talk about that it doesn't really seem to be supporting small startup businesses, which is goal number 111. And it's definitely not sustainable infill because there's no element of transit-oriented development. And I just want to say that if anyone wants to sign the petition against Corona, if you guys are as sick about it as a lot of us are, we're at 950 signatures in county. And please come and sign it if you'd like to. Thank you.
Okay. And so now, no other cards for this item. So we are going to move on to our fifth and last item, which is spaces and places that That is Heather and Drew.
So Heather Hines, planning manager, and Drew Halter, the deputy director, Parks and Rec is going to help tag team this with me. So starting with completed or nearly completed. So we recently had at a council meeting a really exciting presentation from representatives from the Downtown Streets team, which has already been mentioned several times on other items. The council approved a pilot program with that group, so that is happening. I think we have a kickoff in spring 2020. Number 130, celebrating public art by completing an inventory and developing promotional materials. So we have recently done, gone and photographed and assessed all of the public art in the city. It has been something that the Public Art Committee has been looking at to look at both having an inventory with photos, recognizing the artists, where they are, putting them on a map on our website. So that's all in progress. Another piece of that was looking at the condition and developing maintenance, what needs, what's kind of highest priority for maintenance, what kind of regular maintenance we need to be doing with that. So that is happening. We also have a draft promotional for developers that are required to do our 1% for public art. So that is something that we have a draft of that we're looking at and will be coming soon, both in print and on the website, as promotional materials about public art. Drew, do you want to take the next one?
Sure. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here and provide some updates on spaces and places that inspire. So under work item number 157, work with the community to ensure a balanced program of investments for Measure M, which is a 10-year voter-approved $1.08 So as a Pedaluma, as the second-largest city in Sonoma County, we are estimated to receive between $500,000 and $600,000 yearly for that course of that 10-year measure. This work item was really initiated in February of last year, when an ambitious 10-year spending plan was presented to the Recreation, Music, and Parks Commission for review. While that initial proposal focused on restoring parks and the public infrastructure, it was clear after receiving feedback during that meeting that the commission really emphasized that more additional public outreach was necessary to really hear from members of the community and provide better recommendations for the longevity of this measure. So with that, staff took it back, switched gears, focused on a plan which incorporated additional outreach, culminating in a community workshop back in October at the community center, as well as a comprehensive public survey that ran from October through December of last year. So from the data collected, eight categories of investment were presented to the Recreation, Music, Parks Commission back in December. These were consolidated into seven prioritized categories of investment and supported by the commission in January. I'm not going to go through those categories here today, but they're all important. We love all of our parks the same, just as I'm sure you all do. But as a top-tier, the first two categories I will go over. What was apparent through comments, survey, and workshop. Priority A maintains walking paths, bike trails, park connections, and access. Priority B, playgrounds, sports courts. These are the courts that we define as tennis, pickleball, basketball, multi-use areas, as well as active recreation spaces. So those are the top two that kind of rose above the rest. So with that, staff is now working towards aligning projects with these categories of investment and hopefully in time to receive additional public input prior to next year's budget cycle. That's where we are with 157.
So this is some graphics, Downtown Street Team. You'll see the picture on the right is a concept mural on Killer Street Garage that is in process, and this city is entering into a contract with a local artist team for that. That's a, there's a slightly more updated version than that visual, but it is one of the public art projects that is in the process. So, 125. We have been making progress with this. We have initiated internal coordination with staff to talk about some of the issues downtown. We also meet regularly with representatives from the Downtown Association. And obviously, the kickoff of the Downtown Streets team is a big part of this. 126, Begin Planning for Update of the General Plan. Staff is working on an outreach effort, an initial outreach effort. We're anticipating initial outreach to be about six to nine months in 2020, to issue spot, to have initial dialogue, all of this information to go into drafting of an RFP to hire a consultant for the actual general plan update. So stay tuned for that. That is under development and will be out in the community in the near future. 128, which is the fairgrounds. So we've kicked off the development of that public outreach and engagement plan, and that will come back to council and fair board in March of 2020. So that's activated. The Public Art Committee has done several things recently to sponsor other public art efforts in the community, to really pick up on the temporary art installations and the partnership. One of those efforts was a sponsorship for Rivertown Revival to help pay for some of the art, the temporary art and performing arts that was part of that festival. The other one, we are currently executing a contract with the Pedaluma Art Center for a local artist banner project. So those are some of the efforts that our Public Art Committee has been engaged in with this work plan item. 139, and I mentioned this under the SB2 funding, the city is in planning phase to look at City Hall, look at the programming, the needs, what we can do to reconfigure and more efficiently use that space. And then 145, the trestle. So staff is executing a contract with a consultant to refresh the, both the design and the budget around the trestle rehab project. So work had been done on that. It's been some time, so an effort to relook at that, relook at the design, and relook at the budget so we can plan accordingly from there. And Drew, you want to take the next two?
Yes, thank you. Item Number 153, this is Complete Improvements for Lynch Creek Trail, including lighting, wayfinding, benches, and safety, and promote the trail via map for users and digital promotions, e.g., web, social advertising. So preliminary design work for improvements to Lynch Creek Trail is underway. Regular meetings with a Lynch Creek Trail Task Force are underway as well, which includes members of the public, friends of the Lynch Creek Trail, representatives, and city staff. Staff has initiated a bike pathwayfinding signage contract, and regular updates and discussions are being held monthly at the Pedestrian Bicycle Advisory Committee level. Moving on to Item Number 154, this is Prioritize Completion of All Phases of Pedaluma Community Sports Fields Project. For the good of the order, the community sports fields are located on East Washington Street. These are the nearly 24-acre athletic complex. Currently, we have three multi-use synthetic turf fields out there, lighting and parking that is not fully realized. So Phase 2 of that project is at a 90% design, which is very exciting, and we anticipate bringing bid out this summer. That design includes the addition of the 90-foot full-field baseball complex, as well as the additional parking needed to fulfill that design. So an opportunity for staff is, there is work being needed to address an area of community sports field multi-use number two. So these are undulations in the turf at about halfway through their usable life. So this presented a problem for users out there, but an opportunity for us, wanting to pull back the turf and to make sure we understand fully the impacts on that site before we enter into that last 10% of the design for the field and adjacent property. So we're turning lemons into lemonade. That work is going to be done in March, and with that finings, we can incorporate it into the last part of that design, go out to bid in the summer. I think we'll move just into the projects that are not yet initiated. 122, Review Downtown Zoning to Identify Ways to Balance Entertainment Values and Retail and Services and to Incorporate Smart Code Principles Where Feasible. Number 124, Assess and Review Accessibility to Public Restaurants in the Downtown Area and Develop a Plan to Address Identified Needs. Either these goals have yet been initiated. Thank you.
Is that the final word on that section? Yes? Okay.
Drew, I have a question. I'm wondering if you can help explain to this group what we're actually doing with the Measure M park funding? How have we spent it over the last year?
Can you hear me? Yes. So as I mentioned, the spending plan first came over the commission review back in February during last year's budget cycle. So what you included in that spending plan was some preliminary projects, mainly in CIP, and one item, which was reinstate a park maintenance worker and a seasonal work program. So while the other projects were kind of hit on hold, council approved one reinstatement of a park maintenance worker to really help a considerable gap in our abilities to manage some of those parks. But everything else has really kind of been put on hold and is just now being initiated. So in this fiscal year, we've done some trail improvements along Schollenberger, just completed a small section of pathway improvements near McNear Park. And then we're in a design phase for the sport courts, the seven courts that are really in need of replacement. There's a design phase for that. That's really where we are.
And what's next, then? What's coming forward?
So what's coming forward is staff now has better clarity on the lens for which to attach projects that we know we need to get done and align those with these categories of spending to hopefully incorporate those into this year's budget. So we're working on that right now.
Vice Mayor Fisher, I wanted to add that as we develop our budget and our CIP projects, we'll be bringing those to the Parks and Rec Commission before it comes to council so we get that feedback.
Awesome. And I had a question about the general plan and that process, and I'm really grateful that we're starting that this year. Do we have an end goal? Like, is it to get it done in two years or three years? What's your thought about that?
Right now, we are hoping that it would be adopted by the end of 2022. The thinking was, we have to do our housing element. And this did come up earlier, and we're anticipating there could be some significant changes with what we have to be looking at to meet our REDA numbers, our regional housing needs allocations. So that's going to factor in. That has to be adopted by the end of '22 to go to the state for certification at the beginning of '23. So ideally, those would be happening together. So that's, right now, that's what we're trying to see if we can make that happen, acknowledging that that is right around the corner.
Let's make it happen.
So just circling back around to Measure M, I am the council liaison to the Parks and Rec. And we'd like to hear from people. I know people in Pedaluma are very passionate about their parks and their open spaces. And we'd really like to hear from you as to what you would like us to be doing with some of these Measure M funds that we're so grateful to have. Our parks have been underfunded for a long time, and it's not enough. It's never enough, but it certainly helps. And we want to hear from you as to what your priorities are. At our last meeting last Wednesday night, we only had one member of the public at our meeting. And so, you know, I'd love to see some people come out and talk to us about what you see for our parks and what you want us to do with our parks. So, thanks.
Thank you. I want to address the issue of parks. One of the things I would like to see the city, as we go forward, is to continue some of the public-private partnerships we've entered into for some of the parks. Refurbishment of Walnut Park through the Service Alliance Group was an example of a park that needed some work and got the assistance from members of our community who put their labor and their fundraising efforts into it. And Walnut Park is, has always been a nice park, and it's a nicer one right now because of those efforts. Wickersham Park is another small neighborhood park that Ecology spent with probably 75 people. I know the mayor and I were there for part of that. A complete refurbishment of that park, and as someone who walks through and by Wickersham all the time, is a big improvement. And there are other examples. And I, what's that? And the Miracle League is probably the shiny example of that in many, many ways. But I'd also like to see us expand that to the east side of town. There are a lot of small pocket parks and smaller parks that I think, over the years, have needed attention. And I think it's something for the city to look into, finding partners and groups. I know there's a number of groups that can do that. The second comment I make is about the baseball field and the movement toward getting that completed. We really, as a city, only have one other baseball field at Prince Park, which I would venture a statement is fairly inadequate for much of the actual baseball that's played beyond the age of probably 14. We have, the schools provide baseball fields, but the city does not. And I'm looking forward to the completion of that, and as well as the continued effort to get an additional softball field. So the 500 or so young women who play fast-mich softball in this town have a state-of-the-art field.
Thank you. I guess it's really impossible to have 157 top priorities, but we're making such good progress on so many of them, I'm really pleased. Especially seeing that we will be doing something about the trestle promenade this year. I mean, it's critical that we move it forward, whatever lift we can make on it. Also, many of these things have multiple benefits, like that has a benefit to the economy in town. So you're getting two hits of goals on one project. Also, the Lynch Creek Trail, not just recreationally, but environmentally it hits. So I'm glad we're making progress on that as well. But following on Councilman King's comments, we have so many good partners. What's going on at the Poli Class Center right now has to come up as a success, the reinvigoration of that otherwise long-neglected property. And then even ones where the city doesn't lead but stays out of the way a little bit, which is the McNear Peninsula River Park. That group is, you know, succeeding at building a park in our town, you know, coming to success in this year. As much as we want to say our goals, it's not our goals as a city, it's our goals as city and citizens. Their work is so valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding the trestle, is there a timeframe for the refresh on the design and budget on that?
We should be able to bring that to the council by the end of the calendar year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And also, I know that staff has heard and I have heard from the public regarding the interest in really revamping or totally changing out our skate park. And that is something that I hope that Measure M can look at, because we often think of teenagers and younger as being a somewhat overlooked group, underserved group. And this is a facility that used to get a lot of use, and I think could be really revamped so that it is dealing with a segment of our population that I think needs to be heard. And I just want to comment that on Councilmember McDonald's comment about, I think he borrowed a line from Councilmember Haley about 157 priorities, all of them number one. But we do have five categories, five goals here, overarching goals, where we could have number one priorities in each of them. And I do think it is really important for us as a council to set up a hierarchy for these priorities so that we can give staff direction about what is important to us and our community. So having said that, we can now move into public comment. And Diana Barnacle, I'm calling you under the right category now. The vice mayor just pointed out it's the last category, so at least I got a place.
All day, here you are. Okay, so, I've lived in Pedaluma all my life, and I just began getting involved in this whole process. After seeing the way Sid Commons and the Corona station has been done, and the community disregarded, I forgive me if I don't trust your vision on our fairgrounds. I, as my kids all showed at the fair, whether it was cooking, quilting, or dairy cows, it was a big deal to go to the fair. And when I seen what you were proposing after, I don't know how many closed doors, meetings you had and with who, the proposition for our fairgrounds to put hotels and apartments there... next to the fairgrounds is just wrong. You already get complaints from the Speedway and you've totally taken that out. I have people that are local going to Lake County.
Ben? You know, you can submit your comments.
I'm not done.
We don't see time on public comment, but you can.
You just did, you just did with him. Where was he? The man with the wife? It's the same thing.
Because his wife doesn't hear.
It's the same thing.
But you can submit your comments.
I wanted everybody to hear them.
Well, if you submit it, a lot of people are reading the comments online. Thank you. David McCracken, I think this is your chance too.
So, yeah, about the fairgrounds, I think the Petaluma does need to take over the fairgrounds. Current leaders, from what I understand, they live in Santa Rosa and San Rafael and don't have a stake here in Petaluma. Unfortunately, I haven't, I'm not abreast of what you guys have already talked about with the fairgrounds. But one thing that I think is number one is not renewing the contract with the racetrack. It's a nuisance. You hear it all the way from Castagna up to Curra Estates, all the way on the other side of Putnam to Sonoma Mountain. And every day, every Saturday from 3:00 to 9:00 or 3:00 to 10:00, it is just nothing more than a nuisance. I think a good replacement would be an event center, which somebody had talked about apparently in the past, and a hotel. I'm against building more apartments in that location. But I think an event center would be great. Or possibly even a tech center and bringing tech people to this area. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Karen Strollia, followed by Sarah Grossi.
Hello, my name is Karen Strollia. I'm the director for Downtown Streets Team in the North Bay. And I've heard DST pop up a couple of times today, so I wanted to come up here and just give a quick and dirty. DST, our mission is to change the face of homelessness. And really what we do is we provide a platform for individuals to volunteer their time to beautify the community that they're really passionate about, that they've lived in for a long time. Our organization is based out of San Jose and we've been around since 2005. Since then, we've secured employment and housing for over 2,000 individuals. Petaluma will be our 16th community. We're really excited to be here. Really, though, our efforts with the folks that we're working with is to help them build a community, not just within themselves, but also fold that into the greater community. So building that out into our businesses here. I'm super excited to be here in Petaluma. I think that watching all of this transpire today and seeing the transparency that this community holds is really beautiful, powerful, and DST is excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Grossi, followed by Elizabeth Howland.
Good afternoon and thank you for listening to this talk agenda today. I'm here to speak on behalf of Live Oak, the TK to 8 public charter school. It is one of the many excellent public school options here in Petaluma and the only public TK to 8 school that is guided by the principles of public waldorf education. The Fairgrounds has been the home to Live Oak for the past 14 years. And we've created a vibrant community here that includes almost 300 grades TK to 8 students, along with passionate families and educators who care deeply about the future of the Fairgrounds site. Live Oak wants to partner with the city and California's 4th District Agricultural Association in planning for the future of this site. We respectfully request that, one, Live Oak is recognized as a significant stakeholder in the Fairgrounds' planning process. Two, in addition to the feedback through planned public engagement, feedback is solicited specifically from Live Oak parents, educators, and leadership under the focused additional process in the plan. And three, to include TK to 8 public school in the list of historic uses in the first paragraph of the city's Fairgrounds Planning Process homepage. Thank you again for listening today and convening this meeting here at Haresak Hall on the Fairgrounds.
Thank you. Elizabeth Howland, followed by Cody Chisholm.
Well, hello. First of all, I want to thank our amazing, hard-working city staff and each and every one of you on the city council. I so appreciate your efforts. I want to invite you all and anyone in the audience as well to go with me and some of friends of the Petaluma River to a space, a place in Petaluma we think is very beautiful and special, which is the upper reach of the Petaluma River. So contact friends of the Petaluma River and we will get our kayaks and canoes out. We'll take you up there, we'll paddle along up to the outlet mall. And you can see why we think that this area is not only a very important piece of our efforts against flooding and climate change, but also could be a wonderful amenity for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Cody Chisholm, followed by Susan Kirks.
Thank you, I'm Cody Chisholm. I'm with the Petaluma River Park Foundation. Just want to let everyone know that the park is going to happen. We're very confident about that. I know some people were worried, but it is in the process. And since this is our park, we want everyone's input on what you'd like to see there. So petalumariverpark.org is functioning. Go in there and you can give us your comments. And we want to let everyone know that the east side, as well as the west side, is everyone's park. So please, just that it's on the west side doesn't mean it's only for that part of town. Thanks.
Thank you. Susan Kirks, followed by Matt Sharkey.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm Susan Kirks and I'm here representing Paula Lane Action Network, a 20-year-present nonprofit organization here in Petaluma for conservation, American Badger Research and Education and Habitat Protection, and Modern Audubon Society, which is a longstanding Sonoma County organization. I'm almost, my one minute's going to be up soon. With a lot of members here in Petaluma. So just to segue, I wasn't going to speak today, but since Councilmember Miller mentioned that there was only one member of the public at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, I just wanted to identify myself. I was that person. And I have been attending Parks and Rec Commission meetings for many, many years, maybe missing just one or two. So I appreciate that Councilmember Miller recognized that there was one member. And I did speak about Measure M. So very quickly, just to say, we really need to have a broad vision on Measure M and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Much broader, thank you.
Matt Sharkey, and followed by Dwayne Bellinger.
Thank you all for spending your Saturday with us. Sorry. I just want to be here to offer a voice and support strongly for the Speedway. It has been a part of this community for over 60 years. Current ownership group does not live here, but they took over from someone who was a resident here for more than 50 years and has kept it alive. There's a lot of improvements that can be made to the Speedway, but I don't blame the ownership group for not making any of those improvements when we only give them two-year extensions or two-year deals. I've raised my kids there. I hope that they can raise their kids going to the Speedway. I realize that there's a little bit of noise from 3:00 to 10:00 on Saturday nights for seven months out of the year. But I think what it brings to this community, being the closest track within 180 miles of anything further north or east, makes it a strong institution and I hope that it can be here for many, many generations to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Bellinger, followed by Ben Peters.
Thank you again. You don't have to go to Europe to visualize pedestrian-oriented communities. So just think of Petaluma 100 years ago, prior to our being overtaken by cars. A picture of Sonoma 150 years ago, when they built around a plaza where they have a bandstand, they have playgrounds, they had restaurants, they have stores. But most of all, what you needed is sufficient pedestrian-oriented housing so that the retirees, that the other people can live there and live in a community that doesn't necessitate a car. They could use a train. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Peters, followed by Brian Barnacle.
So if you listen closely and you hear the buzzing, that's dimes evaporating into the air because these are 400-watt metal highlight lights. Now, we have one LED project listed here, 151, in the planning phase, okay? We need to really reconsider how we're improving our energy systems here, specifically at the fairgrounds. Because we're going to have people coming here and living here during smoke and wildfire season for years to come. So that includes not only efficient lights, not only clean, resilient energy systems, but that's also air purification systems, right? And we need to do that at the community center. We need to do that at various locations around town. We need to have clean air. We need to have resilient energy systems. I've been speaking at this at the city council for a long time now and it's not translating into this list here, which is unfortunate. So let's listen to this buzzing and remember, we can do a better job.
Brian Barnacle, and followed by Traythan Heckman.
All right, my final public comments. I'm going to restate what I said before, that my priority is long-term planning. I think the best example of that is our fairgrounds and public process. I said long-term planning and public process. The fairgrounds, I think, is, I've shown cows here, just like my mom. And for me, the fairgrounds represents a lot. And I think that in the absence of long-term public planning and good public process, we wind up with the Target Center over there. And that's not the way you do planning. That's what happens when you do projects in isolation. And I look at that and I see what's going on in Corona and I'm saying, geez, in five years, we're going to be really upset when we try and do a Corona-specific plan and we're just regretting those single-family homes at our train station. So I'm just here to reiterate that long-term planning and good public process means listening to people and it means doing things before you have to take that first project that creates an ISO right on the outside of your community monument here. So thank you.
Traythan Heckman.
I wasn't going to speak, but Councilmember Miller inspired me to do so. And I first wanted to just say that I'm a Live Oak parent as well and support everything that Sarah said previously. And I think there's a real opportunity to look at Measure M. And we're going to bring more ideas in the future. But to tie that to goal number 42, in particular around carbon sequestration. Trees have enormous benefits for our health. We could draw additional financial resources to our community if we play the role of a climate leader around sequestration. And so there's just a really enormous opportunity to use Measure M dollars to grow trees, increase sequestration, do planning that involves reducing GHD emissions as far as the new design and the upkeep. And rather than just opinion, we'll bring ideas very shortly through the climate action planning process around this. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Kell, followed by Beverly Shore.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I'm a Live Oak parent, so mostly just came to talk as a Live Oak parent. Just want to say I really appreciate this process. It's really beautiful to see. I'm at a point in my life where I'm getting more involved as a parent in the community. And so it's really great to see how everybody is here and trying to come together as a community. And I think that's basically just the one thing I want to say is, Live Oak, for me, is represented in Sunuwe's community and the beauty of people coming together. I think in these planning processes in cities, sometimes the heart and the soul of why we're doing what we're doing may get lost in the dollar signs and the business summit. So I would just ask that, you know, sometimes we may not present the most logistical, obvious path forward, but there's some beautiful heart and soul of community going on over there. I appreciate being a part of the process here and the school being a part of the process. And I hope we can preserve that soul in some form or fashion. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Shore, and that's my last card. I want to thank you all for having this today. It's important that we all get together as a community. I'm also standing before you as a member of the Parks Commission. I think that the lens for everything that we do, every project that we do, needs to be seen through the environment. And I can't think of any place better than our parks to really be that place that not only inspires, but we can turn all of our deferred maintenance spaces that aren't working very well into urban forests. We can have parks, but they can be sequestration places for us. And it would be beautiful, it would inspire, we can have picnic benches. And yet, we can also serve our community and our overarching goals to combat climate change. Thank you, Beverly.
This is the last word.
Oh, dear. Well, what I'd like to say is, number one, putting Lafferty Ranch on the list with a possible partnering with Land Paths, which would be very cheap for the city. Sounds brilliant. Because the very reason Lafferty Park was not sold to the neighbor 25 years ago was because people saw how beautiful it was. So we start with seeing it and seeing if it's worth anything else. Second thing I wanted to say, I already gave my opinion about the fairgrounds to the fairgrounds group, but not all these people, you decision-makers, important persons were there. And what I want to say is, personally, nothing against Live Oak or the racetrack. I'm not talking about removal, I'm talking about what we may add. I think it needs to be agricultural. I think we need to put our money where our mouth is. We think we like the green hills, we think we like the ranches. The farmers are struggling, they're holding on by their fingernails. We need to honor that. It's in the middle of the city, we can include other things. But agriculture is what we all do every day. We eat. And as I said in my other thing, not intoxicants I'm talking about. Food.
Okay, thank you very much. So, we have just gone through the five goals and I think staff is probably going to want to do a little wrap-up here. But before we do that, I would just like to say that I so appreciate everybody's input and that I hope goes without saying because you guys have made a big effort to come here and we really did want to hear what you have to say. Now, having said that, I think it's very important that once staff distills what has happened here, it is up to the council to prioritize what we go forward with. And we did not do that the first year. And I think we were all a little surprised with how much input we got from the community. But now we've lived with it for a year and we've seen the downside of not prioritizing. So these are hard decisions for us to make as council members, but they are important decisions for us to make as leaders. And so when it comes back to us as a draft, I think that is going to be our task to do going forward. I'd also like to thank the staff for putting this event together. This is not our property. This is, well, it is our property, but it is on long-term lease for a dollar a year to the Fairgrounds, to the Fair Board. And so we are not in control of what happens here, so lights, we don't have control over those. And also, we didn't have control over the fact that we didn't have a compost bin, a recycle bin, and a landfill bin. And I really do think that the Fair Board needs to be more in touch with their role with agriculture and our earth. But I do thank them for letting us use this and I, again, appreciate all the work staff has done to put this event together. I also want to take this opportunity, once again, to remind you, if you haven't signed the thank you note to Congressman Huffman, please do so. It's in the back where the cute little dog is sitting there with our fire marshal. And, okay, and again, thank you to the community for showing up. Now, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, councilmembers, and thank you, wonderful staff. Can you guys, the staff, again, just raise your hand? How many staff we've had here today? Thank you. But thank you, community, for coming out. Beautiful Petalumans, I cannot thank you enough. This is what makes our work successful, is you coming to the table and telling us, pushing us, telling us what your passions are, what concerns you. We hear you and we will be taking this feedback. Both the notes that Charlie took today, the cards that you filled out, the survey, the council comments, we'll be updating this work plan and coming back with council with both those updates and recommended prioritization so council can see where staff is and where the resources are. And I encourage, this is not the only time to get involved. We mentioned our fiscal and organizational sustainability, all of which makes the 157-plus work plan items possible. Please get involved. If you go to our website, cityofpetaluma.org, If you go to our website, cityofpetaluma.org/fos, our next discussion, which will be a very meeting one, is March 7th in talking about our infrastructure, our roads, our facilities, and streets, sewers, everything. So if you can join us on March 7th, that'd be really great. Otherwise, just sign up for updates, and we will be staying in contact with you. So thank you very much.
And with that, we are done. So thank you so much. Give yourself a hand. Good.[1797.57][1797.57]